Don't. Yeah. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. And before we start, for the invocation, could we please have Reverend Jordan Harris come forward from Cornerstone Church for the invocation?
All right, everybody's standing up, which means I get to pray really long, right? Yeah, all right, bow with me. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you thanking you for your immense sovereignty in just bringing all of us into this room together, Lord. We know this is not a mistake that has been made. This is not a series of happenstances, Lord, but that everyone here has been placed here because this is where you want them to be. You have given each and every one of us the opportunity to breathe, Lord, and to serve you in the capacities that you have granted to us in this place. Lord, may you grant us the humility to understand that this is not because we are awesome. It is not because we deserve to be any of these things, but it is because you and your mercy have lavished upon us an immense grace and opportunity to walk along your side and to serve you in these ways. Lord, we know this mercy has ultimately been made manifest in our Lord and Savior Christ, Jesus, and we give thanks that we get to continue to enjoy all of the graces that come with being associated, Lord, to your Son's name. Lord, I continue to just lift up everyone in this room. Your Scripture says that you have placed all of our leaders and authorities into their positions, that you, Lord, are ruling through them, that you have brought them to these places to be obeyed, Lord, they may rule wisely, that your people may know peace in their time, that they may live quiet and happy lives after you to pursue you in everything that they have. And so, Lord, as we get ready to begin this time together to discuss the many items of the agenda, I would just like to pray for each and every one of these leaders, the prayer that King Solomon offered as he was appointed the king of your people and as he sought you and sought to understand what it meant to rule in your name. Lord, it is when this happened that Solomon said that he is but a child and he does not know how to go out or how to come in. He is your servant in your midst of a people whom you have chosen, a great people too many to be numbered or counted. And so, give your servants an understanding heart to judge your people and to discern between good and evil. For who is really able to judge this great people of yours other than you, Lord? What an immense privilege that I have to be able to stand before the people who seek to do this in your name and on your behalf for your glory, Lord. I pray that you bless their time this evening in your holy and gracious and merciful name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call this meeting of the city council to order June 19th, 2019. And Chief, would you lead us in the flag flag?
Let's lead him to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Maloney, roll call. Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda, item number four, do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda stated.
Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Santos, second by Jones to approve the agenda as stated, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item number five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. Okay, when you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off.
Good evening. My name is Robert Jerome. I live in Los Banos. I'm also Sharon Silva's assistant at the Los Banos Downtown Association. Sharon wishes she could be here, but she has been in the hospital in Las Vegas and was just released on Monday. She is working with her doctors and will hopefully return next week, but she asked me to give you guys an update on what we have been doing at the association and through SS Consulting. We have nine businesses to date that have utilized the agency's facade program that Sharon and the Downtown Association and Stacy spearheaded. The association had a wonderful downtown event on June 6th. It was a summer night out, and it got many of the local merchants to stay open late, and it got people to actually come downtown and walk K, 6th, and I Street, which was some of the businesses that were open. The association's website is in its final process, and we'll be actually going live with that soon, and we're looking forward to all that will bring to the community with its many assets and tools. The Downtown Association is also very excited to be partnering with the Los Banos Police Station on a national night out, which will be on August 6th. The association is also in the process of working on our Casino Royale event. This is one of our fundraising events that will be at the DES Hall on August 10th, and we're looking forward to many of the community members coming out and supporting the revitalization and the association. Next week, there will be a P-Bid meeting with the property owners as we are in the final stages of that process as well. In July, Mr. Calgen and Sharon will be hosting a members' meeting for all the association members to get more ideas from the merchants and from community members on how to grow and better market the downtown. We're also accepting applications right now for the Downtown Association for nonprofit clubs, organizations, business, and also community members. We have a new community member membership. The association will also be having its annual farm-to-table dinner on September 19th, and this year's dinner is actually going to be catered by the mission at the kitchen, I mean the kitchen at the mission, and it will still be in Henry Miller Plaza. We are also in the process of developing more marketing programs that will enhance the downtown business marketing efforts. The Downtown Association is also in full swing of its mission, which is to help other businesses grow and to offer organizational training. Sharon, through her agency, SS Consulting, also has many, many trainings through Main Street. She went to Washington, DC and got a historical downtown preservation certification, and so she is looking forward to start offering as soon as we carry on some more inner, more inner-close, how do you say that, sorry, more trainings for leadership, board, and customer service development. She wants to bring that to the downtown to start really helping that. And we're also looking at other partnerships with other organizations in downtown. Thank you, guys, for this opportunity, and we are excited to continue the process of the revitalization of the downtown and look forward to the months to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. Hi, Rhonda.
I was waiting to be invited. Rhonda Lowe, I'm a resident of Los Banos, and as you know, I am a business coach with UC Merced Small Business Development Center, because you've obviously heard me say that. And in conjunction with the city of Los Banos and the Los Banos Unified School District, we are putting on the Los Banos Youth Business Expo. And I'm here tonight to tell you that we've extended the deadline on that. We found that we launched it in, I think it was mid-April, if I'm not mistaken, and of course, that was kind of the end of the school year, and so kids weren't really listening to us as much as we had really hoped to at that time of year. So now, we extended the deadline to give more children in grade six through 12 the opportunity to launch their business with us in a one-day pop-up shop. And now, we're starting to see some response to the things that they're hearing on Facebook and other ways that we're promoting it. So I wanted to let you know, though, in case any of your constituents are asking you about it, I still think that this is an amazing way to let our young people get their feet wet and try something out. They may have a great idea, they may have a good idea, but until we give them the opportunity to show it, we won't know about that. And I think all of us are going to be surprised with some of the things that come out of this. The other thing is, and if anybody's interested, they can go on our Los Banos Youth Business Expo Facebook page and get all the information on there.
When is the day of the event?
The event will be August 10th.
August 10th.
So the new deadline, I had told you we had a new one, and I didn't tell you what it was, but the new deadline is July 1st, and that's for submitting their application and their business plan. And so, we don't want to discourage anybody from this, and sometimes the thought of doing a business plan scares even adults going into business, and so we know it can scare kids, but we've made it a real simple thing for them. It's not like a business plan that you would take to a bank if you were looking for funding. It's really just to help them show that they've thought through this business idea, that they've spent some time thinking about who their customer is and what their product is and how they're going to price it. So we just kind of culled it down to make it understandable for young people so that they don't get too freaked out about the whole thing. The other thing is I have some actually pretty exciting news. When I'm working with my clients here in town, we find a lot of times they don't realize the importance of having a website, and sometimes, again, it's one of those things that are, we have a misconception about what it takes to get a website launched, or if it's even necessary as a small business person. And I'm here to tell you that no matter what size business you have, you need to have a website in this day and age. And for a long time, it's been hard to find anybody that could help us do that, and now the UC Merced Small Business Development Center actually has a person that will come in and do your website for you, which is amazing. You guys don't look as shocked as I was when I found that out, but I thought that was pretty amazing, and those are free services to you. So again, it's our SBDC services that we're providing to you, and they will come in and help you get your website all set up, and they can do it in a way that you can control the backside once it's up and running. So I'm really excited about this, and I'm talking with some downtown merchants as well as other clients I have so that we can get our town kind of in the 21st century in a lot of ways and move us to a new place. And so now, it's not an issue of money to make that happen, it's just an issue of saying, Rhonda, help me. And so, they can reach out to me. I'm on Facebook, Rhonda Lowe, you can reach me that way. You can also contact Stacy at City Hall, and she knows how to get ahold of me. But I would love to see more of our community businesses, the small mom-and-pop stores that would never think they could do this to take advantage of this. So I just wanted to let you know about that because I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Rhonda, can I ask you, does that also include Facebook, too, for a website, or is that just an individual website with a WWW address?
It's an individual website, we're WWW. I work with clients on their social media, and so they have the opportunity to have a complete marketing packaging through this.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and bring it back to council level, and let's go on to item number six, consideration of approval consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine. Vote on one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers, 216-525 through 216-725 in the amount of $569,994.14. Minutes for the May 9th, 2019 special city council meeting. Minutes for the May 15th, 2019 city council meeting. Minutes for the May 30th, 2019 adjourned city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6093, authorizing the Public Works Director to sign all documents, right-of-way certifications, assurances, and other statements for funding through the California Department of Transportation. City Council Resolution Number 6094, accepting the Crest Hills Park Arbor Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number 6095, authorizing the city manager to execute professional services agreements and the Public Works Director, city engineer, to execute individual professional services agreements with Goveya Engineering, QK Precision Engineering, StanTech and Provost and Pritchard Consulting Group for on-call engineering services. City Council Resolution Number 6096, approving the purchase and sale agreement and the sale of the Child Development Center property located at 1624 San Luis Street and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, council, please, I would like to remove item H for information discussion by the city attorney, and we can vote on that in a separate motion. Is there anyone else who would like to remove A through G on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion for A through G? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted, minus H.
Thank you. Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos, to approve the consent agenda, items A through H, or I through G, minus item H. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor, city council, audience. We received some last-minute requests for changes to the purchase and sale agreement that was originally in your packet, and the changes were distributed to you tonight, and I believe there's a red line up on the table for the public, but they are minor changes requested by the buyer, the buyer's attorney, actually, and I just wanted to highlight those for you before this item was voted on. They're very minor insignificant changes. The name of the Merced County Community Action Agency is actually the Merced County Community Action Board, Inc., and that has been changed throughout the document that was in your packet, primarily on pages 1, 2, 3, and on the signature page. And then, their attorney wanted a couple other additions to the recitals, just indicating that the parties would work together to rezone the property. Right now, the property is zoned park, and that's not appropriate for the use that they will be making of the property, and so we've agreed that we will make all efforts with them to rezone the property, continuing upon the sale going through to something more appropriate than park, which would probably be something like public facility. And then, finally, she wanted an indication that their current lease will terminate upon close of escrow if this transaction goes forward. So those are very insignificant changes in terms of the agreement, and staff still recommends approval of the agreement as submitted and as changed by the seller, or the buyer's counsel.
Okay, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Vaughn before we vote? Okay. Mrs. Lewis, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item H of the consent agenda.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos, to approve item H. City Council Resolution Number 6096 is read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to public hearing. If you challenge to propose action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city prior, at or prior to the public hearing. Item 7A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the appropriation limitation for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Item 7A1, City Council Resolution Number 6097, setting the tax-related appropriation limit in compliance with Prop. 4 and Prop. 111 for the 2019-2020 year. And we're going to go to Finance Director Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Each, oh, I have a PowerPoint.
Okay.
So each year, council is required to hold a public hearing for the appropriations limit, also known as GAN, and we by vote have to select the inflation and the population based on either city or county, whichever is higher, and we are, that will do so by resolution. Proposition 4, under the GAN limit, is a maximum amount which is established for tax-funded government services. The amount is to be adjusted each year depending on changes in population, inflation, and proceeds of tax. Proceeds of taxes include tax revenues, investment earnings on tax proceeds, and fees and charges for providing services. Each year, we must adjust the limit for two factors, the change in the Califor per capita personal income, which is provided by the Department of Finance, and the change in population, which is either the larger of the county or city. In this case, it's the city. So if you look at column A, the change in California per capita income is 1.0385. The greater of the change in population, which would be the change of the city population, is 1.0249. You take those two numbers and multiply them by each other, and you get an adjustment factor of 1.0644. And then, you take the last year's limit, which was $87,483,758, and multiply that by the adjustment factor, and that gives you your new limit for the fiscal 1920 year, which would be $93,117,712. So basically, what this is telling us is that we can't exceed that amount in expenditures. Obviously, we're nowhere near that amount. So the appropriations limit is, again, $93 million. Proceeds of taxes is $19 million, so we're under the limit by $73 million, almost $74 million. So we have obviously no problem, there's no question here. This calculation is on page 11 of your budget binder, if you'd like to look at it. It was also included in your staff report. So tonight, all I'm asking is that we hold the required public hearing, select the inflation and population by record vote, and the inflation is California per capita, and the population is the city of Los Banos, and you can do that by adopting the attached resolution, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay, is there anyone who wishes to, on council, ask any questions at this time? All right? If not, I'm going to open the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 6097. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level for consideration. Do I have a motion this time, or are there any questions? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6097 as stated.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
I'll second, please.
Motion by Santos, second by Jones, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6097. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Everyone voted, right? Everybody okay? All right, all right, a little louder. Okay, let's go on to item 7B. This is also a public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget. City Council Resolution Number 6098, item B, adopting the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget including employer salary schedule, Division 4 of the Los Banos Policy and Procedures Manual, and the capital improvement plan. And we're going to go to Finance Director Williams again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have for you, we're going to simplify it from our workshop, so we did have a long budget workshop on May 30th, which we gave detailed information about the budget. You have been provided updated books, and once this is adopted, then as is normal, we'll go ahead and get the adopted books printed. So tonight, we're going to give you any updates to anything that might have changed after the workshop, summary of all the increases throughout the budget. We will provide the changes to the salary schedule and highlight the capital improvement plan. So beginning with the general fund, we just made two minor changes to the general fund since the time of the workshop, and they are both in the police budget. One was for special programs. We added $1,200, and this is for school programs that the police, both, actually, both the police officers and the fire department go out and do special programs with the kids. So we added a couple, a little bit of money there so they could continue to do these programs. They've been doing them already on the money that they had, scraping by on the budgeted funds that they have. The second, the second change that we made was in the vehicle account, and we, it just came to our attention after the workshop that the vehicles that were supposed to be delivered by June 30th of this year aren't going to make it, so we're just asking to take the funds out of the current budget and move them forward to the next budget. And that carryforward is $63,742. So this doesn't change the fund balance, it just changes the year and when the expenditure...
Just on spent money from this year's budget?
Yes, yes, because unfortunately, the delivery's not going to be as of June 30th.
Wait a minute, let me, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, under what category within the police department was that adjustment made?
It's under vehicles, under capital. If you look...
Because I've seen several vehicles in there, I just wanted to know which page...
Okay, if you look under your police tab, let me get to the right page here. We are on page 111, it looks like, possibly, nope, I passed. A little further back. Page 115. And if you look under, it's capital outlay, above capital outlay, there's the line item, vehicles, and it, we changed the estimated amount to $0 because we're not anticipating spending that this year, and we've increased the line item to $180,905. That was about $120 at budget workshop time. So it's just a regular general fund expense. Okay, so those are the only two changes that we've made to the general fund since the workshop. Just to give you a slight overview of the general fund revenues, sales tax makes up about 20%, 26% of the budget, and that's if we separate out Measure H. Measure H is now 13% of the budget, so that's obviously a sales tax measure, and combined, those make up 39% of the budget, and property tax comes in second, making up 35% of the budget. Property taxes, we are anticipating a 2% increase over last year, that'll put us at about $6.6 million. The next highest revenue is charges for service, and that comes in at 10%. Charges for service, we do have a slight decrease, but again, we just discussed a lot of that during the workshop. We don't anticipate for strike team and things like that, so we do not budget on a fire season. So this is just a slight overview of the general fund revenues. There are no major increases besides the 13% to Measure H. General fund expenditures, the largest expense we have is police at 57%, admin at 9%, fire at 12%, Community and Economic Development Department at 6%, code enforcement at 3%, and recreation at 5%. Admin is up 2% over last year, and that's for one-time expenditures, including vehicle purchases and the Palfelt restroom. Community and Economic Development is up a percentage, and that has a little to do with professional services, and we did add a part-time position there. Police is about status quo, code enforcement is about the same, fire is up 2%, and that has to do with Measure H and some other things that we're doing at the fire station for the year. So again, there are no significant changes to expenditures.
Are these pretty consistent with police and fire, 57 and 12%?
Yes.
Throughout the years?
Yes, they are. They fluctuate sometimes if they have a larger project, but usually, that's paid out of Measure P or impact fees, so usually, they're pretty steady.
Okay.
So moving on, a summary of increases for the year, for the general fund. Citywide, throughout all the departments, we had about a 7% to 8% in electricity and gas. Employee salaries and benefits have increased. We have a COLA increase for most of our bargaining units and our unrepresented unit at 3%. Minimum wage is increasing in January to $13 an hour, so we'll see the impact for half a year. a year there. And then, of course, continued step increases. So any eligible employee, somebody who's still stepping and can get a merit increase, that's also built into this budget. And the step increases are at 5, and some are still at 2.5%. And then, specific to departments, you'll see large increases in personnel, but specifically to Measure H, police, fire, dispatch, code enforcement, and recreation. Technical services, a large increase is the, the general plan under community and economic development, and they're finishing that up, but that, those funds, we committed when we signed that contract. So this is the third and final year of the contract, and that expense is estimated to be about $347,000. Vehicles and equipment, you'll see throughout a couple different departments. Vehicles, we have in both admin, we are doing the clean air vehicles. We have two coming out of admin, and I believe four coming out of police. And then, we have the cars that we just moved over coming out of police as well. Fire has equipment such as turnout, rescue equipment, and hoses. And then, building instructors is also fire. We're spending about $99,000 to make Fire Station 1 and 2 ADA compliant and to finish the Phase 2 of station security. And then, just to summarize what we did in Measure H, Measure H is included in the general fund. We did give them, instead of combining it with the general fund departments, we did give them their own general fund pages. Revenues are estimated to bring in a total of $2.5 million for the year. Expenditures are estimated at two, a little, $2.06 million. And this is broken between police, fire, recreation, and fiscal stability. At the end of this year, we're anticipating to have $439,000 left in the fund balance. That will be distributed according to those departments as well. So police, for instance, would have $76,751 at the end of the year. Code enforcement would have $20,113. Fire would have $9,784. Recreation would have $207,526. And the fiscal stability fund would have $125,000. And again, just to give you an overview, we're utilizing Measure H mostly to hire new employees. We'll be hiring six police officers, and one sergeant, one dispatcher, one community service officer, and one code enforcement officer. We will also be purchasing six vehicles to go along with those officers. And then, a handgun replacement program, which includes not only the guns, but holsters, ammunition, pouches, and safety lights. And then, dispatch will be getting an IREMs program. Code, I already mentioned that code enforcement, we'd be hiring one CEO. Fire, we would be hiring two firefighter positions, and then buying a washer and dryer, which is basically an extractor for the turnout gear, and then, safety equipment. And then, recreation has several different programs that we discussed in detail the last time around. And they have, for the $207,000 fund balance that they have, they have a lot of projects, upcoming projects through the 15 years of that. And that's actually included in the CIP, which we could talk about a little later. So balancing the budget. In, in this amount, we're including Measure H. So the total revenue that we're anticipating bringing in is a little over $19 million for the year. Expenditures are $19.1 million. So that gives us a fiscal year deficit of a little over $9,000. Such a small deficit because Measure H is included in this number, but if you take Measure H out of this number, your revenues are estimated at $16.5 million, expenditures at $17 million, and that gives you a fiscal year deficit of $448,562. This is the deficit for the year. However, we do have one-time expenditures that total $751,000. So if we back out those one-time expenditures, we're actually still in the black, and we have an operating surplus of over $300,000 for the year. So general fund balances, taking that balance and splitting it up, throughout the years, we've either committed funds for certain projects, assigned the funds, or we have a balance which is known as unassigned funding. So the remaining balances for, oh, this year, actually, what we have out of the $17 million, $120,900 is for re, fleet replacement, excuse me. So this is money that we had set aside previously that will be utilized to replace the City Hall vehicles and the police vehicles. And then, the $347,000 that I talked about earlier for the general plan, that was committed three years ago when we signed the contract. And so that's not affecting our bottom line. We took that out before. Assigned funds for the year is $98,500 will be spent for economic development, $62,000 on fleet replacement, and that's for police. And then, we considered Measure H to be assigned funding. So obviously, we set up a spending priorities for Measure H, so that is considered assigned funding. It can't be used on anything except for Measure H specialties, so that will leave us a balance in, in that account of $439,174. And then, finally, unassigned, we do have a council-set mandate that we are to maintain 30% of, of reserves. And of that amount, five point, of the, I'm sorry, I lost. Of the $9.4 million that we have in fund balance due to policy, we cannot spend 5.1 million of that. So that leaves $4.3 million of unreserved fund balance for us to do projects with or one-time things. Did you have a question, Deborah?
Yes.
Wait, wait a minute. Oh, you're on. Okay.
Under the assignment for economic development, the 98.5, is, is that for department use, or is that including salaries?
No. This is, this was assigned for special projects. We use it for the different studies that she does, like, so Buxton and, what is that over the counter card?
Industrial improvement, open counter.
We have open counter program, and then, shape and concepts that she uses the money for. So even, it's assigned for specific areas.
Okay. Thank you.
So that 9.1 that we're talking about, we can spend, we have to maintain the 30%, which is 4. whatever, that's only the, the unassigned. The assigned money that we still have in reserve is what, over $2 million?
So we still have, after this fiscal year that we're talking about, 1920 fiscal year, we'll have $3.5 million at year-end, and it's split between different funds. So community and economic development has $207,000 left at the end of the year.
So that's committed money?
This is assigned money.
Yes.
So assigned money is a little more lenient.
Yeah.
That can be assigned by the city manager.
Okay.
Committed money is done by resolution through council.
Okay.
The committed fund balance will end at $200,000 at the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So that summarizes general funds. So changes to the other funds that we've made since the workshop include traffic safety. And again, it's, it's a vehicle. We, we're planning on purchasing a vehicle from the traffic safety account in an amount of $45,000. Once again, it's not going to be delivered by June 30th, so we're taking the money out of this, the current budget and moving it to this current, this new fiscal year budget. We did have some changes to RSTP, gas tax, and LTF after we received some more information. So revenues in RSTP increased by $64,000, gas tax revenues decreased by $4,000, and LTF increased by 90, almost $92,000. Water, wastewater, and solid waste, we changed the budgets to reflect the increases that were adopted at the last council meeting. So revenue for water increased by $189,000, for wastewater, $190,000, and solid waste, $257,000. And then, finally, we did find a typo in the fleet department. It was a keying error that we made, and this keying error caused us to decrease revenue by $3,174. So those are the changes that we made to other funds since, since the workshop. So a summary of overall increases to the other funds include the land purchase. This land purchase is in police impact fees, and that's to buy the future site, and that purchase is approximately $1.4 million. Traffic safety, vehicles, which is the $45,000 that I talked about, and then, the mobile license plate reader of $60,000 that we also took out of the last budget and moved to this new budget. Fire is planning on building their training tower at a cost of $750,000 out of Measure P funds. We're doing a dog park design and construction, a scout hut, and big page park playground equipment replacement, and that all comes out of the Park Development Fund. And then, finally, the community center impact fee account. We're planning on additional parking at the community center and a few other upgrades to the area at $550,000. So just to give you a small overview of Measure V, or Measure P, I'm sorry, we have so many now, I have to try to separate them. The fund balance in Measure P at the end of the year will, is anticipated to be $4.2 million. And this money will be used for building the new police station. So any financing that we have to do with that, whether we decide to bond out, it will go towards costs for that, or if we're getting a loan, it will go towards the loan costs. And then, just to give you a refresher, there are permanent personnel in Measure P, and that includes three police officers, one CSO, one crime analyst, and a half of an admin clerk that works code enforcement. So it is a healthy fund. The blue, fortunately, is the revenue that we're bringing in, and the red is the expenditures that are going out. And for fiscal year 1920, we're anticipating bringing in a little over $1.3 million, and we're only expending $754,000. And that's for equipment needs and for the personnel that I just mentioned. All other money will be set aside for the police station. That's directed at you. So Measure P for fire, their fund balance is anticipated to be $589,000 at the end of the year. And this is good because with this, with Measure P and fire, we're utilizing the funds for what it was meant to be, and that includes putting up that training tower. So hopefully, we'll get that completed by the end of the year and be right on track with the expenditure plan. So you see such a large increase from one year to the next because we are anticipating dipping into that fund balance and building that training tower that I said would cost approximately $750,000. The revenues for this year are anticipated the same as police, of course, at $1.3 million, and the expenditures are anticipated at $1.8 million. In addition to building that training tower, there are also employees that are permanently paid out of Measure P, and that includes three fire engineers, four firefighters, and a half position of an admin clerk. So moving on to the water fund, just to give you a little overview of what the expenditures look like, personnel in the water fund makes up 31% of expenditures at a cost of $1.9 million. Supplies and services make up 30% of the budget at a cost of $1.9 million. Capital outlay makes up 38% of the budget at $2.3 million. And contingency, $100,000 is set aside annually for any emergencies that might occur throughout the year. The overall proposed budget for the water fund is $6,345,564. The wastewater fund, personnel makes up 31% at $1.8 million. Supplies and services make up 27% at $1.6 million. Capital outlay make up 33% at $2 million. Debt services make up 8% at $472,000. And again, we have a contingency set aside of $100,000 in case of an emergency. And then, finally, the solid waste department, personnel makes up only 16% of this department. And again, that's because we do have contract services. That's why it's, the red area is so much larger than the orange area. Supplies and services is at 71%. The contract is paid under this category, and the total balance for that is $5.9 million. Charges in are $393,000, and capital outlay is $545,000. And then, again, there's a contingency of $100,000 for the year in case of an emergency. The proposed budget is totaled to be $8,252,584. Deborah?
Go ahead. Thank you. This, this question is for Alex. Could you please address the state budget that was approved for our firefighters' tower and what we have to expend in our budget for that tower as well?
The, the budget allocation that the city received from the state of California was $5 million for a regional fire training facility slash fire station slash EOC. That, that project could include the training tower, but we really haven't, we really haven't even begun to think about the design process and everything else that could be included in that project. So the allocation from the state of Calif, California is $5 million, is $5 million. I don't know if that answers your question.
But that, that would go to this tower that we're looking at building, right?
Well, there, there is an additional, what, $800,000 anticipated for the expense of that tower. The regional fire training facility could, could include that tower. Really haven't talked through with the fire chief what the timing is on the construction of the tower. Again, it's real preliminary in terms of that state budget funding. We don't know what the strings are that are attached to it. So at, at this point, this budget does include $800,000 for the construction of that tower, for the construction of the tower.
I, I think the point that I was trying to get to is to make sure that this was one and the same, they're not two separate.
Go ahead.
Again, we are very, we, we could end up there, and we likely could possibly end up there. Haven't had that conversation with the fire chief, but very early in that process, don't know what that project is going to look like. Really don't know exactly where it's going to be, so, but absolutely would want to make best use of those funds and best use of the city's funds as well.
Thank you.
Moving on to landscape and lighting, we have 18 districts within the city. Three of the districts are currently operating with a negative fund balance. However, there are signs of improvement. On June 5th, council did approve increases, small increases. There was a 10% increase to Talbot Park, a 5% increase to Meadowlands, and then, a 3.5% COLA increase to a few other districts, District 1 through 10, District 12, District 14, and District 16 through 18. District projects, oh, excuse me, district projects for the year include a playground structure being put up at Orchard Terrace, several irrigation and landscaping projects at Ranchwood, Jolynn Manor, Somerset Park, Senior Villages, and the rail trail, and then, storm drain station rehabs at Crest Hills, Jolynn Manor, Mission Estates, and Stone Creek. These projects are all included in the budget. And then, finally, internal services, there are three internal service funds. Fleet maintenance, which has an annual budget this year of $932,000, and that's an increase over last year because, as mentioned at the workshop, we are adding fire to, to fleet this year. That's on page 250, if you want to see the differences. And then, information technologies, they have an annual budget of $612,000. Some of the changes are contract services. We have $30,000, actually, $25,000 in there to contract out services to help with special projects so more things can get done throughout the year. And then, technical services, it's for network server and storage maintenance. And then, we have an annual computer equipment replacement. So we replace desktops and laptops on an annual basis, and I believe there's approximately 20 to 25 being replaced this year. And then, finally, retirees' medical health. This is a 1.9, $1.9 million annual expense, and this funds retired employee benefits and funds other post-employee benefits based on actuary, actuarial determined contributions. Oh, okay. So now, we're to the salary, which is also included in the back of the budget under, I'm sorry, it's under the appendix, and those are some of the changes that we made to the salary schedule. We did not go over the salary schedule at the budget workshop, so on, on page 266 of your budget book, you'll see the, the schedule. Some of the changes that we made was a cost of living adjustment, or a COLA increase for non-represented employees, including management. And we did make a typo to this, so we, we'll have a corrected version under the Public Works Director, sorry, Mark. We only increased him by 2.5%, so we'll change that to be... We only increased him by 2.5%, so we'll change that to be the full 3%. We added an HR technician position and removed the admin clerk position from the HR department. Measure H, we added several positions, so we have one police sergeant, which is unfunded for the year. Again, that will be funded once the six police officer positions are filled. Six police officers, one public safety dispatcher, one code enforcement officer, one community service officer, two firefighters, and one recreation coordinator. We're all added to the schedule. And then finally, at the bottom, you'll see an increase of minimum wage to $13 an hour, and that'll be effective beginning January 1st, 2020. So some good news for the year is that for the past three years, we've been including in the back of the budget a separate tab that shows you what capital improvements that we need for the next five years. It's basically just been a few summary pages, and it tells you the projects that we're doing for the current year, an overview of what projects the different departments have anticipated throughout the, for the next five years, and what we can actually fund. Some of these projects include the PAL restrooms, City Hall restoration, which will be done in three phases, fire station security, which is on phase two, the dog park, several street projects and sidewalk projects, a census tower, which will be coming out of water, the landfill closure, which is out of solid waste, and several different equipment purchases throughout the various funds. In this small chart, you can see the blue is the projects that are included in the capital improvement plan, and the red is the money that we have funded. So you can see the huge discrepancy, especially there in the general fund. We have over $19 million of anticipated projects, and we have $5 million that are funded for the next five years. But the better news, and I know Alex is really excited about this and probably the only person besides finance, is that this year, we have extended upon the summary that we put in the back of the budget book, and we've actually created the capital improvement plan. This is a very detailed plan that with the help, I should say with the help of finance, because really, the departments go through and they build it. Each one of these pages, and each one of these pages in this book gives you a very detailed description of either what the equipment purchases that needs to be made or what the project is. And this is everything that the departments are anticipating that they need done in the next five years. So we will have this large book that is actually the same size of the budget for you at the same time that we print the budget. The other good news is that we're so excited about it that we're planning on having a separate workshop to just go over all the projects that are in here. This will help guide us for the next several years on what the council's priorities are for the budget. So this is a tool that you guys could use to help us learn what your priorities are. So we're very excited about it. It's a lot more information, but it is, it's very beneficial to the city. It's very exciting for the finance department. We're happy to have this added tool. And I thank not only my staff, Kim, Rosemary, and Sarah, who put a lot of hard work not only into the budget but into doing this capital improvement plan, but also the different departments, because they worked directly with the finance staff to make sure each one of these pages, each project, each piece of equipment had a great description, pictures, everything to go with it. So it took a while, but it's a good thing to have, and now it won't be so bad moving forward. In the future, we are anticipating doing this capital improvement plan most likely around January or March with the mid-year budget. That way, you will have this tool when we build the next year's budget.
Just one other comment. So the intent is to coincide the development of the five-year CIP or the update of the five-year CIP with the budget process. So the five-year CIP will be considered right alongside of the budget, and again, a planning tool for the council to identify priorities and capital projects for the community.
That's correct, thank you. So upcoming projects that we have right now, staff is working, finance staff is working on the preliminary audit. We are anticipating the audit years coming out the end of July. The final audit for 1819 fiscal year will be performed in October. Again, we're working on a capital improvement plan workshop, and we haven't decided the timeframe for that. And then the mid-year budget review, which we do annually, will be sometime between February and March, and that's dependent on when we receive our property tax payments. And that's, we usually receive them anywhere from late January to early February. And so finally, that's it. Like I said, a quick summary of what we went over for two and a half hours in the budget workshop. Tonight, my recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget as submitted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions at this time, or can I open the public hearing and then bring it back to council level? Is that all right? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing concerning the 2019-2020 workshop, or excuse me, budget. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the item? And it would be, it would be item 7B. Does anyone wish to speak on this? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Council members, any comments at this time? Well, I have a few. And I'd like to do something new this year and put a little pressure on us to make sure that at the end of the year, we get a report of what we said we were going to do. And I'm sure it's going to be done, but the dog park, the dog park is a long time in coming, and I'd like to see that dog park open by this time next year with the adoption of the new budget for 2021. That's one of my personal goals, and I hope the council will adopt that. And now, we've placed $15,000 from last year's budget and $15,000 from this year's budget to start the camera program downtown. And we all know that surveillance now in any form is going to be the way of the future to help with protection of our community. It's already helped in the private sector with individuals who have cameras, and now we're working on a citywide system to start that process. So this year, we're doing a pilot program of $30,000, 15 from last year, 15 from this year. And I'm hoping that if that is successful, to bring back a budget amendment maybe mid-year to talk about increasing the cameras in our community. But that'd be a council decision for a budget amendment. And one of the other things that I think we need to consider, and it's something we've been talking about for a long time, and that's graffiti abatement, and how we can take care of that. So that's something else. You know, maybe when they're going, the city's going to go out to bid to talk about how we can have graffiti abatement and what it's going to cost. And so that probably will also be a budget amendment that will come back at a later date. And I'm really excited about that, not because there's graffiti in town, but because how the graffiti will be handled. And the way it will be handled is the graffiti abatement program will then go out, and the individuals responsible for that will be able to go out and get the permission slips from the individual landowners, therefore freeing up recreation and public works to do other things. So it's going to be an all-encompassed, all-in-one program. So after they get the permission slip, they can go right on site at any time, and God forbid any graffiti, they can clean it up, and our town will be cleaner in the process. So the other thing, 25 years in the making, and that's the PAL restroom. That agreement was signed, can you believe it, 25 years ago, that PAL restroom would be built. And we're at the end of the current agreement, and so now that restroom is going to be built this year. I don't know if we have a dedication for a restroom, but I am just happy, that, so happy that this is finally going to get done this year. And we want that completed within this budget year. No more delays, because that way, you know, we don't have to listen to anyone else, and we completed our obligation. And now the city and Alex and the staff at Public Works have worked really hard to make sure that that's going to come to fruition. And people may not think that's a big deal, but it's a sore subject. It is a real sore subject between two entities, and we want to correct that ill. So I am happy that this is finally going to get done. So those are kind of my goals, dog park, expanding the security. And we should get a report soon about how the cameras are doing once they're installed. Gary will come back with a report, or Police Chief will come back with a report, and then the progress on the PAL restroom, and then graffiti. So, you know, another thing that's going to be in this budget, and I saw that, the license plate reader. And, you know, these are not exciting things for the general public, but they're exciting things for law enforcement and to have these things in order to combat crime more efficiently. And so we want to do everything that we can for fire and police to reduce how they do their job and let them do their job. So I don't know if that's the correct way to say it, but all the things that we're talking about are to help them be better, better departments. They're good, they're great now, they're just going to get better with technology, and this is just the way to go. So those are my comments tonight, and we'll be coming back later on with some recommendations depending upon how these tests go. So Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to chime in on the dog park, and I'm glad that, you know, the city saw fit to put in our 2019-20 budget to complete this park. And certainly, I too would like to see that completed before the end of next fiscal year, which would be this coming fiscal year, 2020. And also, the surveillance cameras for the downtown, the study that will be done with what we're budgeting to put up certainly helps, because not every business downtown has surveillance, and we do need to be able to have that available to the city so that our police department can see what's going on right away rather than having to go out to individuals to see what's on their camera systems. So those two things I'm really happy about, as well as the other things that the mayor has mentioned. It looks like we're making some positive steps to move forward and help our city be a safer and a nicer place to live in with the graffiti abatement. You know, that's a really big thing. I remember a couple of years ago seeing in Merced that they have a graffiti abatement truck that goes around the city to take care of that problem. I'm not sure if that's how it's going to happen here, I'm hoping so. But these are some positive steps that are being taken in our city. I'm really happy to see that happen going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just, thank you, staff, for the foresight. It's, you know, a lot of us in this room can remember when we had visions, but we didn't have money for these visions. Now, we have visions, and the visions are going to come true because we have the funding. And thanks to the good graces of the citizens of Los Banos, you can't believe what Measure P and Measure H will have done and will do for this community. You cannot believe. So I just wanted to thank you personally, public, for supporting us in the Measure P many years ago, and then the alternate Measure PAK, and then Measure K, and all the twists that we've had in Measure P. But believe me, it helps to fund our police and fire. And now, we have Measure H, and it includes recreation now and other capital projects that are going to help us out with running our city. So thank you, and staff, can't thank you enough. This is amazing. We've never had CIP, all these things that we're bringing forward. It's just absolutely amazing and amazing to have the flexibility to do these projects and bring them to fruition. So I can't thank you enough. Thank you all. Any other comments? Mrs. Lewis, do you have another comment?
No.
Okay, all right. Who's going to make the motion on this great budget? Mr. Lewis, beat you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just perusing it here right quickly. Okay, this is item B we're talking about.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6098 as read by title.
Okay.
And with the additional changes by staff.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos, to approve City Council Resolution 6098 with the addition of the changes that were proposed by staff this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None, carry. Thank you. It's gone to item C, public hearing, to receive public comment, consideration of amending, and restating Chapter 13, Title 11 of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to taxi cabs. And we're going to the taxi cab expert, Mrs. Allen.
She's passing it to the city attorney.
Oh, she's passing it, oh, so you're the taxi cab expert? Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, audience. This item, not nearly as exciting as the last one, but I will try. There is a PowerPoint
All right.
that I haven't seen yet. So thanks to Sandra Benetti for putting it together. Also, this has been a collaborative effort between the police chief, the Community Economic Development Director and her staff, and myself as a result of new legislation deemed necessary by the state of California last year and the year before. So you'll note that the original taxi cab ordinance in our codebook was adopted in 1946, which I venture to guess might be older than all of us sitting here tonight. So it's due for a facelift. There was some minor changes by an amending ordinance back in 2000, and since then, no subsequent ordinances. This is not licensing going on in the city, but we thought it was time to upgrade, given the new laws that went into effect this January. These are the two laws. It's Assembly Bill 1069 and Assembly Bill 939. I really believe that these are in, these were implemented due to the advent of organizations or companies like Lyft and Uber. And what the legislature is trying to do by overregulating this again is to make it more streamlined for actual taxi cab companies. I don't know if they have succeeded in that, but we're going to follow their lead in terms of making our ordinance consistent with these two new laws that went into effect, like I said, January of this year. The most significant change in the law is that prior to this year, a taxi cab company would have to endure licensing in each jurisdiction within which they operated a cab. So you could have a taxi cab company in Merced but actually be picking up fares in Los Banos. And if that was the case, you would have to have licensing both in Merced and Los Banos. This, these two bills, the new law does away with that. And so only one local jurisdiction will be responsible for regulating taxi cabs, and it's the one where the taxi cabs are more in the definition of substantially located. I believe we have five here in Los Banos that will fall underneath this. So that's essentially what's going on, is we can no longer license cab companies from other jurisdictions that are picking up fares here in Los Banos or dropping off fares in Los Banos. So the other big part of this, these two bills, is it strengthens the requirements for safety and drug and alcohol testing for taxi cab drivers. And you'll see that in the proposed ordinance with required alcohol and substance abuse testing programs. Also, the cab companies are going to have to have safety programs within themselves as well as, I think there's something in there regarding how they will deal with persons with disabilities that they're picking up as fares. So there are some teeth to these new laws, and we've included all of them in the proposed ordinance. I thought you might ask, so I asked Sandra to put in a slide to preempt that. This does not apply to Lyft or Uber or any other type of ride-sharing company. Uh, this is, does not apply to Lyft or Uber or any other type of ride-sharing companies. They are regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, and they're not locally regulated, although I believe there are some larger cities attempting to chip away at that so that there may be some local regulation that we might be interested in doing in the pa- in the future. But Lyft and Uber, their regulation is through the California Public Utilities Commission, and that's how they like it, that's how they want it. They don't want to be locally regulated. So the proposed ordinance essentially incorporates the changes that were made by the two Assembly Bills. Uh, we've, uh, updated our ordinance to add our definitions that coincide with the state law. Um, it updates the ordinance in terms of defining who needs a, a local license, and that is a company that's substantially located within our jurisdiction, and there's a definition for that based on how many fares, uh, originate with them in our jurisdiction. Or, in the first year, if their business is actually located here, they will have to create, uh, a way to, um, compile data so for the next year, we can determine whether in fact they are substantially located in this jurisdiction. It outlines an application process for both companies and drivers, which is more comprehensive than our past one, and it streamlines it, and it allows for over-the-counter processing of these, so that no longer will a taxi cab company have to come, uh, and get a, through a public hearing process here at, uh, City Council. It'll all be done administratively, over-the-counter, by a fairly exhaustive, uh, application process and background screen in terms of a, uh, criminal background, um, in terms of the drivers, their, take a look at their driving history. So it's going to be a, kind of a two-pronged, uh, approach using the Police Department and Community and Economic Development Director.
Do we inspect their cars? Make sure they're safe?
And, that, that's funny you should ask. The, the new law requires that that be done through a licensed, certified mechanic. Um, so they will have to have a certification, but we're also going to have an inspection done by the Police Department, just for things like cleanliness and things like that. But they will have to provide each year, uh, certification from someone licensed to do so, that their cab is, is safe, uh, for the public to, to drive in. And then we will be doing our own local inspection to make sure that, uh, it's appropriate in terms of its cleanliness, and so on and so forth.
Would that also apply to Uber and Lyft?
Nope.
No?
As I said in the past slide, Uber and Lyft are regulated by, uh, Public Utilities Commission.
Wow. Yes, go ahead. Wait a minute.
Just going back on some of the, uh, certifications that they have to provide for the city, such as the background check and some other things, those are things that they pay fees to go to the Police Department to conduct for them?
Yeah, they will, they will pay. So, uh, they will, they will pay for the live scan, they will pay for getting the DMV, um, printouts on their, uh, driving history, and so on and so forth. There will be a fee, uh, associated with the application and the renewal. That has not been, uh, calculated yet, but that will be coming to you once this ordinance takes effect.
Okay, thank you.
One of the big things, uh, you might notice in, in this slide, is that the minimum limits for liability insurance, uh, currently is something like fifteen thousand, thirty thousand, which is, might have been a big amount in the year 2000, but it's certainly not a big amount, uh, in this day and age, in terms of things that could happen in automobile. So we've raised that limit to, uh, one million dollars, which we think is, uh, appropriate and in line with other requirements for other types of permits. So that, that's a big one. Again, we are following the state's lead on the company's testing internally, um, their drivers for, uh, controlled substances and alcohols. It's called a pool program. They'll have to have, the companies will have to administer themselves, and then we'll be asking for the same testing on any types of renewals or an initial, uh, application, either for, for, or for the driver's permits. Um, and also will require an, an indemnification agreement by the company indemnifying the city from third-party lawsuits, which is, uh, something we don't have now. Oh, and that's it. And I thank Sandra Benetti for putting together this PowerPoint. She did a good job. And I thank staff for their help, so I'm here to answer any questions you may have. And it's staff's recommendation that you open the public hearing, um, close the public hearing, and, uh, introduce the, introduce the ordinance, waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, and we'll bring it back at the next meeting for adoption, assuming it's introduced tonight.
Okay. So let me, uh, let me, um, first ask City Council, any questions at this time before I open a public hearing? All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on ordinance number 1172. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone. I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level.
There's one last thing I might want to add.
Yes, go ahead.
I slipped my mind. Um, we're, the City Council is also, uh, has the authority to set the, the rates for the, for the drives, and I checked, and last time we did that was like in the 1980s, and so I have a feeling, we set the minimum rates, or, excuse me, we set the maximum rates, and we haven't done that in a while, and frankly, we didn't have time as a staff to kind of get our arms around what those maximum rates ought to be. But don't be surprised if you see, uh, a resolution coming forward in the near future that gives you a better idea of what, what rates are in other areas, so that we can at least set a maximum rate, so that, uh, I assume that the companies are competitive with each other locally, but, uh, we want to take a look and make sure that those rates are appropriate for our area. So we'll probably be doing a study of that, because I don't, frankly, I don't quite understand how they work, um, but we're going to figure it out, bring that back to you.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Well, if no one has any questions.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. And again, I'm, I'm going back to Uber and Lyft, so the, the PUC is the one who controls them? All right. So, so if they do, is there anything that we can add to put them under some of the same restrictions of inspecting the cars, of, 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 uh, of having, uh, licensures similar to the taxi cabs? So we, we trying to be on a more level playing field?
It's my understanding the answer.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's my, it's my understanding the answer is no to that question.
Okay.
I believe the city of Los Angeles is attempting to kind of chink the armor a little bit, and so I'll be following what they're doing, but it's my understanding right now that the exclusive jurisdiction for regulating ride-sharing is with the, uh, Public Utilities Commission. Now, I do know that there are some regulations, uh, that airports, uh, in terms of pickup and where they can pick up and things like that, but I don't think that goes as so far as designating what the car has to look like inside and out, and those kinds of things.
Okay. So you just keep an eye on Listserve, and if anything comes up, then we can amend the, uh, the, uh...
Yeah, I guess, uh, if we really want to get into the business of regulating those, we, we can at some point in time, if, uh, that opens up.
Well, for me, I'm just looking at fairness, because the taxi cab, uh, individuals are so much more restrictive than Uber or Lyft.
Uh, so I'm not familiar with the Lyft and Uber regulations, so I couldn't comment...
I mean, as far as our, our local city, is what I'm concerned about.
So I couldn't comment on what the PUC requirements are for drivers, and so on and so forth. I just didn't have time to check that out.
Okay, okay. Well, sometime, maybe we can...
I think there is a couple Lyft and Uber drivers, uh, circling the city.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to make it fair for everybody and, and equal opportunity.
Well, you know, the taxi cab people will be happy with that.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, uh, with that, if there are no more questions, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, um, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1172 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos, for the waiving of the first reading and introduction of ordinance number 1172. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis? Let me, let me, go ahead, I'm going to open both mics here, and we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, introduce ordinance number 1172 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos, for the introduction of ordinance number 1172. Director Maloney?
For Rio, Johnson Santos.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Walter.
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay? Item eight, Merced County Regional Homeless Plan Presentation. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, since this is a county-wide plan, uh, this evening, we have John Chekely, uh, with the County Executive's Office to present, uh, the plan. Uh, both the Police Chief and I can provide answers to questions if the council has them, uh, from the city perspective, um, and you, Mayor, uh, have also participated in several meetings, so, um, anyway, with that, what we're looking for tonight from the council is input on the plan. Uh, the plan is preliminary, uh, so again, we're here this evening, uh, presenting the draft plan, or a high-level concept of the draft plan, uh, and looking for input and comments from the council. Uh, so with that, if it's okay, I'll kick it over to, uh, to the presentation.
Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here. John Chekely, as stated, um, Merced County Management Analyst. Uh, so tonight, what we're going to discuss is the 2019-2020 Merced County Regional Plan. Uh, the genesis of this plan was the governor's proposed budget in January, which allocated, or proposed to allocate five hundred and fifty million dollars for jurisdictions regionally, for our region being the county, that developed a plan, um, to, to address all the jurisdictions, as well as the unincorporated communities. Um, so out of that, we've, we've begun holding meetings, as stated, um, including a lot of mayors and city managers from, I would say, the most impacted jurisdictions throughout the county. Um, we have had offline and maybe less formal conversations with some of the less impacted jurisdictions, such as maybe Gustin, or Livingston, or Dos Palos. So a lot of our planning here was based on a point-in-time count that's conducted one time, one day annually. Uh, that point-in-time count showed an eighteen percent increase in Merced County from, um, from two years prior, and it showed, um, a significant increase in individuals who are sheltered, which is a good thing, and then a slight reduction in the unsheltered population throughout the county. Uh, the governor's, uh, may revise, uh, actually increase that funding to six hundred and fifty million dollars, and we're waiting on a trailer bill to figure out exactly how that money is going to be distributed, whatever, whether it's going to come to the county. There's some lobbying going on in Sacramento, to see if that's going to be direct allocated in a block grant to the county, or if it's going to go through our local continuum of care, which I'll explain, uh, in a little more detail. So just a, a quick overview, we're going to go over some concepts. Um, as stated, these are really in the conceptual stage right now. Uh, there's nothing definitive in here. We're really trying to get a lot of public input and, um, comments on this, and as we've gone through, there has been several comments that have been helpful, uh, in the development of this conceptual plan. Uh, I really want to emphasize the COC, which is a continuum of care, which is a HUD-designated organization that administers some state and federal funds, and it also administered the funds that we received in the last year's budget for emergency homeless assistance. We received about three million dollars, which is about twice as much as we would normally receive through, um, our, our typical distribution from HUD and the state, uh, housing and community development, as well as the city collaborative. It's, it's, uh, it's refreshing to, to sit down with cities and get that input versus, um, just really working through the COC and conceptualizing what makes sense in different regions. There's, there's a lot of great input that, as we broaden our scope and brought workgroups in, that you're, you're finding. Um, just today, I was driving with a homeless individual, and I'm like, "Hey, is there a lot of drug use out there?" He said, "Yeah." So, "What can we do about that?" He said, "Well, people are willing to come in, but they're afraid of detoxing. Where's your, what's your detox plan?" And just something like, every day, there's some tidbit. So as we broaden our scope and bring in more and more stakeholders, I, I find it's really helpful in conceptualizing what, what a, what a real comprehensive plan to have a systematic response to homelessness would look like. Uh, we'll also review some potential facilities to support the plan. Adam Gray, uh, starting in April, has been convening meetings again with the same, uh, workgroup, city, county, uh, business community. Um, he was able to procure seven and a half million dollars directly to the county, um, for some, either navigation center or services, so we are walking through what that would look like, um, countywide, and then open it up to y'all for some, some next steps or comments. So the purpose was to, to really get some measurable objectives for, for not just the community at large, but really specific communities, measurable objective to what makes sense in Los Banos, what makes sense in Merced, uh, and then to really get a strategic and efficient use of funds. We have a meeting again with Adam Gray next week, where his request was, "I want to see the funding matrix. How much money is coming to this community? Where's it's going? What is its impact? Where is it maybe not having as much impact?" It's also been really helpful to identify some gaps in funding and services for subpopulations that don't have specific funding streams, and what do, what do you do about that? How do you go about addressing those subpopulations? And then there's really a focus on, on the client. It's why, you know, as I'm driving people around or conducting outreach, really one of my first questions is, "What are you agreeable to?" You know, that, there's, there's some misconceptions out there that a lot of people aren't agreeable to anything. My experience is they may not be agreeable the first time you meet them, they may not be agreeable the first thing you offer them, but if you're consistent and go out there often enough and build up some rapport, relationship and trust, that there is likely to be a lot better outcome than if you just are, are stuck in your one way of approaching things. So some key objectives, we, we tried to, to keep this hugely complex social, um, issue into a really manageable, targeted, let's break this down into something simple that we can at least look at. So we've, we've really broken it down into four primary, um, activities. One is outreach and engagement. Going out, identifying individuals, trying to determine needs, and direct those individuals to the, to what makes the most sense for them, uh, to get them out of homelessness. Uh, so that first step, outreach, engagement, building rapport, being consistent, covering the county, um, through some of the emergency funding, they have funded an outreach worker dedicated to the West Side, so there will be someone out on the West Side, five days a week, forty hours a week, able to help with outreach and navigation. Housing resources is next, so I think we would all agree, in our community, if not in almost all of California, there's a, a huge housing shortage. Uh, that shortage is making a, a bigger and bigger pool of residents competing for a smaller and smaller resource of affordable housing. So our community, we're not Houston, Texas, with a ten percent vacancy rate, we're that first, uh, bullet there, housing first, the practice of finding someone on the street, regardless of what the barriers are, whether it's drug abuse, mental health, putting them in a, in a house and working with them there. We don't always have that option, so you'll see in this plan, there's a lot of emphasis on transitional and, and navigation-type shelter plus case management, just so we can at least get people off the streets and into a shelter to work with. So it's very difficult to work with someone who's on the street, who's, you know, prone, they're prone to moving around, or just, just hard to work with. It's also impacting, I would say, everyone in this community, whether it's just from a hu- human sensibility of like, "Man, I don't like seeing that," or very practical, those people residing behind my business who are impacting my business and clients not coming in here. So I, I think it's safe to say that everyone in this community, if not state, has an, a opinion on this, or has some type of personal impact. Um, so in regards to that step two, that transitional housing, it, we'll, we'll look at some navigation center, some interim housing, um, and that, that will also include something we're calling the distributive model. And the third component of that is permanent housing, permanent supportive housing, permanent housing, affordable housing, housing stock. I hear that they're going to put two thousand dorms at UC Merced. That's exciting. It's not going to house one homeless person, but it's going to free up some other housing, where we can actually, um, potentially place one of our clients, you know, one of our, one of our neighbors, really. And then the, the fourth component, we're calling system supports. This is, uh, you know, you can, you can have the greatest plan in the world and break things down into really simple ideas. If you don't have the systems to support what you're trying to accomplish, um, I think we would all agree again that the results are not going to be what you're, what you're targeting. So what we're doing now is identifying, categorizing all available funding. What we're finding is every, every one of these funding streams is restricted in some way. Uh, if it's an HSA, receives about five million dollars a year, we have to have linkage to a dependent-age child in order to access those funds, or for their home safe program, you have to be in, uh, an adult... Or for their home safe program, you have to be an adult protective service client. So there's every one of those, behavioral health has a lot of funding as well, but that's restricted to their seriously mentally. You have to have a diagnosis through a clinician, and if you don't, you're not eligible. So there's a lot of gaps in that as we identify these subpopulations. Developing multi-agency teams, we recently met with behavioral health in the police department in Merced. I know Chief Breezy and I talked about some relationships he has out here in Los Banios locally. Developing teams where law enforcement's not being required to take someone to an emergency department, developing a relationship where maybe a clinician can be in there, do some emergency department diversion, just be a little smarter, we're all kinda working out there, but if we all worked a little bit more cohesively and closely, the outcomes are likely to improve. Developing housing inventory, we have access to 150 housing choice vouchers. Unfortunately, we don't have access to 150 affordable housing units that are willing to accept those. So really trying to identify and get an inventory where as resources become available, as people become willing to enter our programs, we're able to make placements immediately versus having to wait, hey, you've been given a housing choice voucher, let's go start our housing search. That hasn't been very successful. Updating our CES and HMIS system, so the CES system is its coordinated entry system, it's really a prioritization tool. Again, best practice is housing first, limited resources, where you wanna take the most vulnerable populations first. So we'll do something called the VI Spadat, identify what their service needs are, and use that as a tool through CES to prioritize the next most vulnerable individual on the streets for that limited amount of housing stock that we have. We have a long way to go to be really effective in that, just to be frank, we're not the only ones. You know, I'm not embarrassed to say that we're addressing it head-on, but we do have a long way to go. Our homeless management information system, these concepts are data-driven. No one's really just pie in the sky, why are we doing this? So through our homeless management information system, you hear a lot of speculation, well, people are being shipped from all over and everyone here is from Santa Clara County. Well, so we pulled the numbers for 2018, 77% last known zip code or last reported zip code was from Merced County. So the people who are homeless out here, they're not, there are some people who are moving around and are transient, there's no doubt, we're never gonna stop that. My neighbor's not from Merced either, but you know, like, we can't use that as a justification not to do something. That's just not a valid reason not to do something, that person's not here. Can we mitigate and prioritize based on county or area? I think we would explore that, but I don't think we're in the business of not providing services to someone who's in need. But that, again, is another tool that we need to improve. If we're gonna be effective, that tool needs to improve as well. Implementing a homeless court, another collaborative opportunity, really being pushed by the city of Merced, the district attorney, the superior court, the prosecutor, the service providers, just again, a whole array of organizations that are coming together to say, hey, we should do something. That court's really targeting the most chronic cases, someone who's been out in the streets for 10 years, has brushed against law enforcement likely more than once. And those, at the point when someone is willing to take services, those cases, those charges that are still hanging out there becomes impediment to it. So we're exploring models for a homeless court, and there's two different, I think, there's a front-end model where at arraignment, hey, let's enroll you in the court. Not so great, if I'm homeless, I have some drug abuse, and now you're enrolling me in a program. But at the back-end one, which I witnessed in San Diego, very successful, where you would present a case, hey, this gentleman's been working with us for eight months, there are these outstanding charges, he's been housed, what do you think about throwing those out? And it was very successful there. And then just enhance case management, we're meeting with property owners, they're like, yeah, you know, well, that person or individual is eligible for your programs, great, lots of success. I'm a property owner, I'm also a businessperson, I get my rent, as soon as those services are done, I have to do an eviction, they're not able to manage. So we really have to focus more on life skills and building independence, or identifying people who will never be able to do that. And we use shared living environment homes where individuals will link them to income, some of that income will go to the landlord in a shared living home where they would share a room, the utilities are paid, meals are provided, landscaping's done. And to be frank, that maybe is as functional as some individuals are going to be. So some potential facilities, and again, just emphasize, very much a conceptual phase right now based on some numbers from a point-in-time count that happened in January. So for the city of Atwater, the city mayor's been involved, the city manager. I mentioned earlier, distributive housing model, we would target two homes. Distributive housing, it's used now for the shared living environment as well as for some respite care in the city of Merced. We've visited a couple of those buildings, not as impactful. I actually have a behavioral health house right around the corner from me, I had no idea till I got this job, and they're like, let's go on a tour. Like, hey, if you turn here, that's my house, hey, if you turn here, you're really close to my house. And the lady was like, well, there's our house, no idea. No idea that that was a transitional housing unit that housed six people, you know, men six months, women six months. For the city of Atwater, we also are targeting a rehabilitation fund. To build affordable housing is not affordable, it's probably $300,000 to $500,000 per unit. The city of Merced just got preliminary award for 119 units at $36 million. These are not affordable, they're not quick, they're not easy. So our idea is a rehabilitation fund would be beneficial to a community for some blighted or substandard property and bringing those up to standards, habitability standards, and relatively quickly getting in the housing pool again. It is also a good way to prevent homelessness. We go out with code enforcement, your property doesn't have running water, we're gonna have to red tag and leave. Those people are never happy. They're never saying, thank you for getting me out of this house without power and water. They're always saying, where am I supposed to go? This is what I can afford. And those are difficult conversations, and it seems like they happen like that. So that estimated capital investment was based on a trailer park that we were working with a property owner, had 30 vacant units there. They needed minor stuff, I need a new window, I need a lock on the door, I need a new floor in this one. We didn't have any funding to do that. So those units still sit vacant because we couldn't bring those up relatively quickly to habitability standards. So what we're looking for would be a capital investment of about $100,000. Again, really specific to that trailer park, but applicable countywide. The annual operating budget's about $500,000, that's for the intensive case management we were talking about for the trailer park, and not necessarily for the most chronic homeless, but people maybe who are at risk. Atwater, some of the feedback we got that's really valuable, Atwater had like 16 people on the point-in-time count. Why are you creating 36 beds? These beds aren't necessarily for the 16 people that were identified during the point-in-time count, but for people who are at risk of homelessness, for other individuals who, again, just like the dorms opening up, any housing stock we're able to create, we're excited to do it. And then the distributive houses are $100,000, $120,000 per home. The six-to-nine number is based on a five-bedroom home with about one and a half to two individuals per room. We wanna have options besides just, hey, do you wanna go to the shelter? Hey, do you wanna go to, we want motels, shelter, a room in a house. Often we'll run across people with PTSD, I just got released from prison, I'm not living in a big shelter, too many rules. We're trying to build that array of housing services, so as people are saying, no, no, no. We had a guy today, I got a room for you in a house, no, let me take a night to think about it. And you just gotta catch him when it's right. And then the total impact, again, 36 to 39 beds. For the city of Los Banios, the distributive housing model, we were looking at two homes in the city of Los Banios. One home has been funded through the homeless emergency aid program, which is outside of this estimate here. And then we've also had, outside of this planning, conversations with Sutter Hospital to fund a respite care. So four beds for respite care patients, four beds for emergency department diversion patients, where they can go and either recover versus being discharged back to the street. And SB 1152 has really incentivized hospitals to come up with a plan and maybe get some of that community grant funding and make it available. So these houses are outside of the ones that we're already looking to increase the housing stock here in Los Banios. In Los Banios, the 49 people during the point-in-time count were all unsheltered, there was no shelter options out here. There were, I believe it was 11 people who were in shelter, those are basically HSA clients who are eligible through linkage through a child to stay at a motel voucher. So although they're still considered homeless because they're not in residence per se, that's really considered transitional housing, they were not unsheltered. And I take a lot of pride in the fact that we don't have a lot of unsheltered families running around in Merced County. We're also exploring a congregate shelter site, we had visited a host house up in Patterson. It's really a programmatic cognitive rewiring, it's a program, it's not a shelter, it's not just, hey, come here and take a shower and get your meal. You have to be accepted into the program. It was about 15 beds there. We've talked about it, does that make sense here, does it not make sense here? We did decide it did make sense to at least throw it on there and say we're gonna explore that, that is a potential option. Estimated capital investment, about $500,000. I think maybe $600,000 would be a more honest answer for that, depending on if a congregate site was explored or not. And then an annual operating budget of $600,000. The numbers I saw for the congregate site were $400,000 capital, $400,000 for operating budget, so. The total impact here would be 31 to 44 beds, that's inclusive of both of those different options. City of Merced, obviously the most impacted jurisdiction within the county. There'll be a couple slides here that will detail further what's up here on the screen. A navigation center to provide 96 to 192 beds, that's based on a single or double bunks. So a single bunk would be 96, obviously double is twice that. What makes a navigation center versus a shelter is the supportive services, the case management. A navigation center is basically shelter with case management. It's the one shelter in our town prior to February of this year. And D Street in Merced did not have case management, did not have positive outcomes. It really allowed people to stay there for six months, shower, sleep, it's important, but we're really trying to move people off the streets. There would also be an enterprise center component, very similar services to what Catholic Charities does. Hey, I'm really limited income, I just got a $600 utility bill, I need help paying it, or I'm not gonna have utilities, I can't, I have to choose between my rent, my food, or something like that, where we could have resources for those people who, throughout our county, are often either at risk of losing their house or having to make choices between a house payment and food for their kids. The estimated capital investment, and frankly, I find this very low, is $5.7 million, so 36,000 square feet. Establishment tier, made out of steel buildings, is what we looked at. We looked at a lot of different options before coming to this being probably the most pleasing for the community as well as the population. So $5.7 million, based on an estimate provided by a consultant. Annual operating budget, we sat down in our work group with service providers throughout the county, said, what do you want here? I want a clinician, I want a veterinarian, threw it all up on the board, you know, what's the ideal? You know, I need office space over here, I need a double locked office over here. Okay, that's a lot of money, it's $2.5 million, but we want to get, what is the ideal out there? And if we have to scale that back, just because of the availability of funding, we would have to scale that back. The total impact here is 96 to 192 beds. The goal was to develop as many beds as possible to get as many people off the street as possible. This is kind of an aerial view of the navigation center and the components. This design has already likely changed just through cost. Why are you building seven buildings? It's gonna be a lot more expensive, why is the roof elevated? So a lot of practical people are starting to take a look at this and provide input that would likely change the design of this navigation center, but the components are likely to remain the same. An outdoor sleeping area, access for your dogs, really trying to address the three Ps here, pets, partners and possessions, storage for individuals who are living on the streets. Trying to overcome every reason not to wanna participate in a program. And then this is a floor plan, it's really just a little more detailed where the admin offices would be. Again, likely to change, just somewhat of a wish list of what we'd like to see in a navigation center. So communities countywide, I mean, it's obvious that the city of Merced is much more impacted than, say, the city of Dos Palos where the point-in-time count was five, or the city of Livingston where it was six. So it wouldn't make sense to, it makes sense to do something, but it wouldn't make sense to do something like a congregate shelter or navigation center. So we're really thinking the distributive housing model. What is a shelter, it provides someplace, it provides all the same things that a house does, so why wouldn't we just go and find something that's already built that's not gonna be hugely impactful in the community? And rent it, you're gonna provide the shower, and this is also what we're asking these people to do. Hey, you're living a lifestyle that's somewhat out the norm of what we would consider a normal lifestyle. I feel like a missionary going out there sometimes and talking to people, and they're like, do you wanna come out? No, I'm good. What am I supposed, how do you overcome that? We're asking people to come in from their lifestyle and kind of re-engage in what we all consider normal. They've got a new normal, so the distributive housing seems like a good solution for that, getting people into at least that environment or setting. So we're targeting six homes, 18 to 27 beds through the less impacted communities. You know, the Livingstons, the Dos Palos', the Wintons', the Delhi's. And then a rehabilitation fund, again, something that's probably relatively, the estimated investment, I was thinking $12,000 to $15,000 per unit, per bed. Someone who works for the county said, not if we do it. So how do you set that up and how do we develop that program? Is it a partnership with Habitat for Humanity, something like that, where we can kind of get, you know, our prevailing wage requirements and some other limitations that we would have and still have an impact with that amount of investment. An annual operating budget of about $750,000, again, for the intensive case management and just the home rentals themselves. So community-wide, we'd look for an impact of about 34 to 46 beds. And then there's a summary here of proposed facilities, pretty wide range there, total number of beds, 197 to 321. Again, mainly based on single or double occupancy beds, bunk beds. Capital investment of about $6.5 million, very rough estimates at this point, again, really preliminary numbers. And then operating expenses, an annual operating expense of about $4.35 million. Where do, I'm board supervisor yesterday, where does that come from? The state's really good about providing capital funding to get something up. Where are you gonna find money to operate this? And those are some of the questions we're asking ourselves and kind of exploring. SB 2 provides revenue annually for jurisdictions within the county. CDBG for non-entitlements provides revenue or potential revenue for public facilities. We'll be looking next Friday at all the other revenue that's coming in here, how do we leverage this, what's flexible, what's not? Lots of shelters are not in vogue right now. People aren't looking to fund shelters too much, so we're just gonna have to take a hard look. If this is what our community wants to do, are we gonna have to redirect funding from maybe programs that are less successful or less impactful to other ones? So we'll be looking at that on Friday next week and just start discussing options. It'll also show us what we can and cannot do. There's very restrictive, programmatic requirements that the state and federal government have that we just can't get around. But, you know, at this point, we're kind of looking at our next steps. We'd like to, I think, come back to all the jurisdictions with that plan, what that plan looks like. It's gonna be something simple, a four-to-six-page plan with a couple measurable objectives and what makes sense in your community. You know, nothing worse than somebody who's not from your community saying, hey, I think this makes sense for your community, and here it is. So today's really an opportunity to get your feedback, and any comments that you might have, anything you'd like to add? I know Alex has me on speed dial at this point, if there's something that comes up later. You know, I just want you guys to know I'm accessible for any questions or comments or feedback at any time. And that kind of concludes our presentation at this point.
Well, John, for me, it's, you know, Los Banos has a a real problem with the number of people that are locating because of cheap housing. I don't wanna say cheap housing, inexpensive housing from what it is in comparison to the Bay Area. And, you know, we don't have any rentals. We converted some land, a number of acres to R3 to build apartments. And now, you know, I've asked about an update on that individual, and that individual's having problems, you know, getting funding to do what he needs to do, because it's not only just building a place, it's building a safe place. Building a place that people wanna go, and we talked about security, we talked about cameras, all the things that are needed now to make a facility safe. So we're, we've, the city council has done its due diligence and converted land that was R1 to R3. And so now, I And so now, I'm hoping that individual can secure funding in order to build these apartments because there is a definite need. Now, talking about low income, and you just mentioned that the cost of building is very expensive. But what, basically, we're probably, I think, you know, if I could take anything back to the governor, I would tell him, I said, number one, is there a way with these large corporations to have people locate where they work or where they work, or, you know, that's where they could live? Because right now, the Bay Area is getting an eight-hour employee, they're getting an eight-hour grade employee, and we're getting a 16-hour resident. And what's happening is that, is that we found out a long time ago that rooftops do not pay. So if they're not spending their money here and they're not contributing to our community during the daytime, then it makes it tough for us to fund more things. And so it's just a vicious circle. So if I could take anything back to the government, I mean, to the governor, we're telling, number one, these corporations need to start locating in their communities and to bring the jobs here. And number two, if you want to cut down on air pollution, that's, you know, we have 4,822 commuters that leave Los Banos. And I'm just saying, that's 4,822 cars, maybe. So I don't know if that's double occupancy, it could be, it could be more than that, more than that, that leave our community. So you can imagine all the road miles that are traveled every day. And then you have people that are just trying to survive, and yet now they have to pay the gas that they need to pay to go from one place to another. So it's a vicious circle to contribute towards making more people homeless. Because with the house payments or the rental payments and just to survive in the community, and it's a filter-down effect. First, Gilroy was the affordable place to live. Then Hollister became the affordable place to live. Now Los Banos became the affordable place to live. Well, now they're moving towards Dos Palos, Fireball, and other places. Their commuting is getting longer and longer, and everyone is saying, how are we going to pay? How are these cities going to expand? Because rooftops do not pay the way. And so some changes have to be made at the state in order for us to do the type of things to bring in more income so we can fund some of these projects. Because right now, if we build these sites, is there going to be money available in the future in order to fund all this?
Likely in the short term. I think the concern is in the long term. So the state made emergency funding available last year, it's making another $650 million available this year. Recession is inevitable at some point, funding will dry up. The answer is, I don't know. But likely, likely no. Likely not enough. That's, and I think that's why it's important to throw these numbers out there and have an honest conversation about what can we, you know, the state will fund us to build something. I can almost guarantee that. The ongoing operation expense is the mostly concerning part. And then once you stand something up, who's going to be the, who's going to be the one to say, well, I'm sorry, we're going to take this away?
So we want to build a swimming pool. This is off-topic a little bit, but we want to build a swimming pool. A swimming pool is $5 to $8 million. And I'm sure the creativity of everyone here, they could probably find the money to put that together. But who pays the $250,000 to $300,000 a year to maintenance? And the city manager and the bean counter has told me, where are you going to get that money? And so it'd be the same thing with the homeless sites and everything else, that we can find the money, like you said, to put it up. But where does the money come? Then do we go back to our citizens and we say, you know, this is another, you know, unfunded mandate that we need to take over? And it's the right thing to do? We all know that. That's why we're looking at, when Alex and I spoke, and also with you, when we went on those visitations, you wouldn't know that there is a bridge housing area in your neighborhood. You wouldn't know that there's a respite care area in your neighborhood because it's so well-funded and it's so well-maintained. And that, to me, is, you know, a great way to go and a start for Los Banos. Because we want to do things, something, and we want to do the right thing. We want to do the right thing to our community, just like Merced, Antwater, Gustine, Livingston, Dos Palos. Everybody wants to do the right thing, and we want to do that. We want to be the contributors to this crisis. And like I said, we designated land for R3. Now, the person may not have the funding to build it. So.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that seems to be common as well, getting the funding for any kind of multi-residential is a challenge. And I think that's your role, right? We talk about whose role and responsibility in a lot of this is. I mean, as a city, right? The planning, the zoning, that's kind of your role in this. I don't think anyone would look to the city to provide supportive services. It's really the county's role, the COC's role, to develop strategies and implement it and to determine, you know, based on a 10-year plan, what we're going to do and where we're going to target the funding that does come through the COC. That's their role. I think the important part, the part that I'm excited about, is all of those interacting and kind of complementing each other's roles in this address. I went to the Merced City Council meeting on Monday, and they were the entitlement community in the county, right? And they were dishing out $165,000 of services through CDBG. It was nice to see it. I think going forward, I'd like to be involved in, I think, consulting with the COC. I mean, they're doing good stuff. How much better stuff could we all do if we really kind of coordinated that and worked kind of single-mindedly towards the goals that we're going to try to outline here in a pretty short plan? But I think to your point of funding, there's no promises in the long term that something like this could be funded. There are funding streams out there that can fund it, though.
Well, we want to be a participant, we want to be a willing participant. And our police chief is on the continuum of care, which is great. The city manager and I attend all those meetings. There's another one's coming up, another one coming up. And we are excited about the possibilities of how we can take some people off the street and help them. Because I think that we need to do that. And I think the right thing to do, the humanitarian thing to do, is if someone goes into the hospital and they don't have a place for, to recuperate, that's what the respite care site is all about. It's the right thing to do. And someone wants to get off, truly off homelessness, and we provide some bridge housing for them so they can get a job, some money management classes and things, I think we're doing the right thing. I think we are doing the right thing, that's what we need to do. Counsel, I will vouch for this man, this is a good guy. And so if you have anything to talk to him about, please do so. He's really down-to-earth. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a front comment about the CDBG money that Merced is able to offer up. It's because they have a population size in order to be able to get that money. We don't.
No, no.
So, you know, I just wanted everybody to understand that we're not able to access that level of money because we don't have a population. You mentioned a couple of things, case management and homelessness court. You also mentioned Patterson had a project that you're exploring or looking at, but I kind of got the feeling that maybe you're not really looking at that project. Do you know anything about that project and how it operates?
The host house in Patterson?
I don't know which one it is. You just brought up the project in Patterson.
We've actually made a visit, including staff from the city of Los Banos. Had a pretty extensive meeting there with Assemblymember Adam Gray and the person who operates it, got to meet some of the participants who were going through. I can't, I do a disservice. It was cognitive, kind of retraining, and basically, it's a program you voluntarily have to be accepted in. But her example of someone being accepted, she's like, so what's the best, this was the example she gave of someone she was talking to, she was a very direct and frank lady. So, you know, tell me something good about yourself. And the guy's like, I'm a great father. She goes, no, you're not. Great fathers aren't homeless on the streets doing drugs. Like, just a real, in-your-face-type program. But she got him to get enrolled in that program eventually. It's a six-to-nine-month program, I believe, and this is, we are going back a little bit, in order to get people to just retrain and kind of pay back. Part of the program is paying back to the community that you've basically been taking advantage of by being homeless, by littering on the streets, by living on the streets. So it was, it was a different program than I would say I'm used to participating in. It's probably not a program that's doing the best-practice housing first type thing. I think it was an effective program for the scale of the homeless population in Patterson. I believe it was an effective program in getting people to become independent. I think the concern is, how do we get people from just completely self-dependent to kind of independent and able to coexist with other people? I hope that makes sense? And that it really has to do with intensive case management?
Not quite, for me.
Okay.
And let me just give you my perspective. From what you've presented today, I have the understanding that our main goal by state mandate is just to get people off the street, get them in housing, get them showered, feed them food. But where I'm seeing the primary problem with the state is that there's nothing in here for treatment. There's nothing in here for their drug and alcohol treatment. And until we address that in the state of California, you can put someone up in a house all you want, but it's not going to change the behavior. And so the Patterson program that you just spoke of is beginning, in my opinion, to address some of those problems. And I'm not saying that we don't need to take action to do some of the things that are presented here tonight for the city of Los Banos. But I'm, you know, and I'm hoping that, you know, the gentleman sitting here tonight and you as, you know, working with the county, can take back to the state that mental health treatment is primary. You can't get people to come off the street, and you've said it tonight already, that a lot of these programs in Merced that are operating already, you offer them to come in. I know in the Bay Area, they have programs out there offering people to come in. But when you're hooked on drugs, that is not a viable alternative for you. You have to be able to be in a treatment program, get off the drugs, stay in treatment, to be able to realize what you're involved in, what your situation is, to have a clear mind to understand why and how I got here. Through unfortunate circumstances in a lot of cases, you know, it could be trafficking, anything could have gotten people into the situation that they're in. But until we start treating and until the state of California starts putting money into treatment of mental illness and drug problems, homelessness will always be a problem. It will always be a problem. So, you know, I know there are states out there, Rhode Island has a very successful program where the recidivism rate is something like in the high 80s, low 90s, of people who have been homeless and have committed crimes, and they have a solution for fixing that problem. And those people have become productive citizens in society again. They're required, once they finish their treatment program or sentence or whatever it was that they had to go through, to stay in treatment. And the state pays for that treatment. And if they don't stay in treatment, then there's an alternative for not staying in the treatment. So, you know, I think it's wonderful to get people off the street. San Francisco's been trying to do this since the 70s. They are, number one, the worst in the state of California for homelessness, and they haven't figured it out at this point. You can't just continue to throw money at housing and not treat people for their illness. So that's, you know, that's my take on it. I've worked in this field for over 20 years before I retired. And I saw money, year after year after year, being dwindled away from mental health treatment into other programming, and people are left to fend for themselves. And it just doesn't work that way. You have to treat them in order to house them and get them to be productive in society again. So that's what I'd like to make as my statement and hope that, you know, all the powers that be can take this back. I'm sure the governor and all the legislators probably have heard this, but until they get the concept that people need treatment, these kinds of things are only Band-Aids. And they'll end up back out on the street doing something else again, and you won't ever get them to come back in. So I applaud, you know, the state of California for giving money to start this process. Certainly, you know, I hope they build into their budget futuristically to continue to have funding. If that, if this is what the governor wants to do to end homelessness in the state of California, but to end it, you've got to end the cause of the problem. So that's what I want to pass on. And, you know, I've listened to your proposal. I understand what it is that we need to do here. I think it's a wonderful idea, but the primary thing is, we need to treat people for the reason why they ended up being where they are today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Just briefly, I wanted to ask about the shared housing. Are you finding, because they have a manager of each house, or I imagine someone owns the home and they rent out the rooms, essentially. Do you have an issue with, are you finding a pretty good coordination with the, I guess, whoever they're under? And then the working, I guess, working within the guidelines? Are you finding that they're easy to work with?
The, for the property owner?
Yes, for the property owner.
So most of our experiences with the Merced County, or most of my experience is really with the Merced County Rescue Mission. They actually have people who pursue them to rent their properties. So I, they have a pretty good network, I'd say about 12 homes right now. Some of it's shared living, sober living, environment, one respite care, and then some bridge housing as well. That's, they're different models, but each of them does have a house lead and then a care coordinator. They get nurses from Stanislaw State, nursing students to come down and kind of go over pillpacking and some of those, you know, life skills that can potentially help change people around here, impact the emergency departments less. I don't have any interface with any property owners. All I hear when I talk to the rescue mission representatives are that, like, John, this is something we could do, we have good relationships in the community, people are actually pursuing us to rent these homes. So I can't speak to that directly. I can get some testimonials from the rescue mission for you. I would like to come back in a month or two as this plan further progresses and kind of present a little more refined approach, make sure I'm incorporating the comments of the officials here as well.
Okay. And also, if I may ask, the, do you find at the houses that there's perhaps any extra activity going on, maybe police activity going on in the area due to the fact that perhaps you have some people who aren't quite, they're there, but they're not quite ready to be there? Are you finding any of that?
Individuals in those homes?
Yes.
No, again, really limited experience there, though. I think the ones that we visited, I mean, you couldn't even tell. Actually, you pulled up into the community, and the house that you would identify as the one that we're clearly renting out for the people who are formerly homeless, was not the house. It was actually the really nice one next door that's well-manicured. I think the service providers are really cognizant of the fact that, like, we have to, we have to be at our best. Like, you really are, I don't want to say asking for a favor, they're paying for these homes, but you're asking someone to take a risk. And there's a lot of people with big hearts in our community that are willing to take the risk, but they're only usually willing to take it one or two times before, like, all right, that, you know, that's just not worth the return.
Gotcha.
So I think the impact is pretty minimal. I could ask maybe, like, law enforcement if there was ever any calls, but from my understanding, not a huge impact. But that's something else I could bring back. I think consulting with, like, Merced PD to see if there is anything that would be outside the norm.
Gotcha.
I know the house that's around the corner from me, I saw a guy trying to get in through the window. There's a guy who left his key in the door. You know, I immediately pulled over and asked what's going on. That could have been anyone else. If I didn't know that was a behavioral health house, I clearly would not have pulled over and been like, hey, dude, what are you, excuse me, hey, gentlemen, you know, sir, what are you trying to do to get into this house? I could be that same guy who forgets my key and locks it inside the house trying to get in. So if I didn't know what it was, I wouldn't have known what it was.
No worries. I just wanted to ask because I actually had this same experience where there was a home fairly close that I'm aware of, and I didn't even know it was even tucked into there. So, and it was, like you said, it was very neat and everything, but I just didn't know for other areas if you're finding a different experience.
And I think this model, like a group home, is not something that we're unfamiliar with, or six college kids living in a house, or a house that's got three generations of families living in it. Someone might be like, oh, there's going to be six people in a house. Well, there's 12 next door. You like, it's, I think, just kind of being realistic with people and frank and making sure the community knows and making sure this is transparent a process as possible and, you know, trying to be inclusive, you know.
So you're not putting the neighborhood in any risk with the individuals that are there? That's basically what you're trying to say?
Not, that's a good question. I mean, not at any more risk than I would say a neighborhood would have.
Well, what I noticed, you know, if I may also say that... Well, what I noticed, you know, if I may, may I also say that, what I noticed was they didn't have any hangers-on, no one was hanging around outside, and 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 so they didn't come with any baggage, basically. And and so they were there, they were there to be in the program. They they went to work, someone would pick them up, take them to work. They would come back, and then they had classes in order for money management, if I if I remember correctly. And and then they had, like, a house mother there 24 hours a day. And and so, you know, like, like with any facility, I I think what impressed me is that the same thing that I'm trying to accomplish, and and I think the council is too, with making safe places for people to live, with the with security cameras, with the with the onsite management and and security. And so this is basically, I think, what they're trying to accomplish. And too bad we couldn't do this for all the needs of of the individuals that really wanted to get off homelessness and 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 start be contributing members. I I think, I think this is kind of the way to go. So.
Mayor, if.
Yes, go ahead.
If I might, I probably shouldn't admit this, but that the house I lived in in college was probably a little more disruptive than these homes. But it, I I will say that that the police chief and I, and you yourself, Mayor, did tour a couple of these homes. And if there is an interest from the council, either as a group or individually in groups, I think we could probably go tour those those homes if there's an interest. So, I would offer that to the council if you're interested. And you can just let me know, and we can follow up on that.
Yeah. Please, take him up on that offer. I I think you'd be surprised. So. Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Lewis.
These homes that the mayor and our chief of police and the city manager took a tour on, were they primarily occupied by people who have acknowledged where they are, they're in case management? Because I heard mayor said that someone picks them up, takes them to work and and brings them back home. So, I'm assuming these are people who have come to some resolution about their homelessness? Or were they people on drugs? Were they, are these people in treatment, or have they been in treatment?
So, the the respite care home was people who are directly discharged from the emergency departments? So, they're they're at varying degrees. It would be hard to say individually without knowing who was in those, those programs are operated by our Merced County Rescue Mission. Basically, they're contracted through Dignity Health to provide this. The respite care is a three to 28-day, generally short-term, hey, we don't want to discharge someone back to the street. But I imagine if they're, you know, frequent attendees of the emergency department, they're, they probably haven't reached the level I I think that you're referring to where they've recognized it, you know?
So, they're they're still in a state of trying to get their life together?
They are, and I think that's where the rescue mission, that's where the case management is is really effective, getting the housing plan together. But unfortunately, some people are going to be discharged back to the street. Not everyone is going to find housing. They try to place people at the shelter following, they try to get them connected with social security and offer them a a space in a shared living home, shared living environment. So, I think they they go to great lengths to to try to find permanent housing for them and to enroll them in in programs. Some of their programs are faith-based as well. So, they have, like, sober living environments that are funded through their faith-based organization. So, there's, there's several avenues that I think they would try to, you know, get people off of their current situation.
And I was kind of referring to the bridge housing, too.
The navigation center that's being proposed in Merced, is that just for the city of Merced, or are residents throughout the county able to access that? Because it looks like it's, it's, it looks like it's almost like a beginning stage of trying to bring people in from from living homeless.
As far as an option, like the entry point for the most amount of people? Yeah, of of all the options, I think congregate shelter is is probably the one that resonates the least with a lot of people that I I will interact with for for a lot of different reasons. In regards to whether it would be a region-wide or kind of a jurisdictional, I I think there's a lot of desire throughout multiple communities, and that's one of the concerns that Atwater expressed, was why would you develop 36 to 39 houses of units of housing? If I have a population of 14, there would be concern if someone from another community was moving to our city. And I think that would be probably the same concern expressed in this community if they were to build something, you know, not scaled. We're really trying to be conscious of that, and that's one of the regional planning means. I could not imagine that someone who is living in Los Banos had said, hey, I really need the navigation center services, would not be eligible to enter those services. But I think we are looking at this jurisdictionally and trying to right-size that solution there.
Is there any thought at looking at plans such as a regional center for people who are, you know, entering in at the ground level? And then having someone who's ready to move to the next level be into the housing in the various cities is, if that's where they came from?
I think the Housing First restriction, which goes into place July 1st, so it's, you don't really characterize things as steps. It's basically you take someone, no matter where they're at, if the option's available, you offer them, you know, again, the client focus, like, some people are going to want to go to a shelter if that's the only option. The majority, and I think the best practice is to try to get someone into a home and then work with them there, regardless of sobriety, regardless of, you know, compliance with the behavioral health plan, regardless of income, regardless of any barriers to housing. I think that is a requirement as of July 1st. And it's going to, some of this funding that we're talking about, like, one of the big concerns, is you're going to have to follow that model to be able to receive state funding. So, developing a continuum, I think what we're trying to do is develop an array. I would call it an array of housing versus a continuum, you know, stage one, stage two, stage three type stuff, just to to be cautious of of being compliant with state law. What, I think, one of your comments, too, if you don't mind me, just on the on the behavioral health and the mental health. Today, when I was driving that fellow, and I asked about the substance use in the 80% and his, you know, his expression of like, they need a, you need, we need a detox center. Somewhere for someone, like, people are deathly afraid, the homeless individuals that I'm talking to, the individual experience homeless, they want to come in, but they know they're going to go through a horrific detox. So, I mean, I I appreciate your comment, because that was the first time I've talked to somebody who's out there, and he brought that up. So, now, I mean, as we're developing a regional plan, like, where is our detox center? How does that fit into all this? I mean, if that's really a barrier, maybe we need to be asking everyone who's identifying as a substance abuser, hey, are you interested in this? And and kind of add that to our our plan. So, just just wanted to follow up on your comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
If not, John, thank you. Please come back.
Yes, sir.
I will. All right. With the council's permission, I think we're going to take about a five, 10-minute break. Is that okay? All right. Well, Alex wants five. Okay. We'll take a five-minute. With the council's permission, I think we're going to take about a five, 10-minute break. Is that okay? All right. Well, Alex wants five. Okay. We'll take a five-minute.
If not, John, thank you. Please come back.
Yes, sir.
I will. All right. With the council's permission, I think we're going to take about a five, 10-minute break. Is that okay? All right. Well, Alex wants five. Okay. We'll take a five-minute.
If not, John, thank you. Please come back.
Yes, sir.
I will.
All right. With the council's permission, I think we're going to take about a five, 10-minute break. Is that okay? All right. Well, Alex wants five. Okay. We'll take a five-minute. Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, we do have a presentation tonight. It's not necessarily about illegal fireworks, it's about all fireworks, safe and sane and otherwise. So, with the Fourth of July approaching, that Chief Hurley and I'd like to take a moment to talk to our residents about fire safe, fireworks safety, the use of safe and sane fireworks, how to identify them, and last but not least, the laws regarding the use of fireworks in the city of Los Banos and the fines that you will face if you are issued a citation. All right. So, moving on in the the PowerPoint, the first one is the the point of saying that all fireworks in Los Banos are illegal with just a couple of exceptions. I'm going to say that again, all fireworks are in Los, in Los Banos are illegal with individuals under the age of 18 to purchase or possess safe and sane fireworks. So I'll reiterate that point. If you are under 18, it is illegal for you to possess fireworks, period. Obviously, dangerous fireworks are illegal in the city of Los Banas for everyone, but even safe and sane fireworks, the fireworks with the state Fire Marshal's seal, are illegal for you to possess and/or use if you are under the age of 18. It is unlawful for any person having care, custody, or control of a minor under the age of 18 to allow them to basically use, discharge, or possess any safe and sane or dangerous fireworks. Dangerous fireworks themselves are unlawful in the state of California, and as I have mentioned, in the city of Los Banas, and the use of dangerous fireworks will cause the immediate seizure and the issuance of a hefty citation for $1,250, I believe it is. Just to go over quickly, some of the safe and sane violations that we see most often during that period of July 1st to July 4th is the unlawful possession by minors of fireworks or the unlawful discharge of fireworks by minors. The discharge of safe and sane fireworks between the... Did I move forward? Who did that? Thank you, Kim. Sorry, I forgot about that. So the other thing you can't do is you cannot discharge fireworks between July, I'm sorry, June 30th and July 5th. So you can be cited for any of those. Private property, like we talked about, you cannot discharge fireworks on private property without the property owner's consent. So if you're walking down the street with you and your buddies and you have safe and sane fireworks, you're over the age of 18, and you decide, "I'm going to go discharge this firework on some unknown individual's driveway", you can get a citation for that if the property owner or the tenant of that property complains to us about it. And moving on to the next and last slide that I have, that seal there on the left side of that slide is the state Fire Marshal's Safe and Sane Registered Firework Emblem. If you have a firework and there is a question whether or not it is a dangerous firework or a safe and sane firework, look for that insignia there, that marking. If it is not there, it is a dangerous firework. And as you can see there, the fines for possession or discharge of a dangerous firework, firework without that insignia, is $1,250. You'll see at the bottom of that slide, on the right-hand side, there's those two Los Banas Admissible Code sections. A is for your use, your possession of dangerous fireworks. The B section is if you allow someone on your property to discharge a dangerous firework, you're going to get a $1,200 citation. So if your friend comes up and he's like, "Hey, man, I've got this really awesome firework. Can I launch it off in your driveway?" And we roll up and it's a dangerous, we determine it's a dangerous firework, you are going to get a ticket for $1,250. So that's a real quick rundown of safe and sane, dangerous fireworks, the times and dates that you can use them. If anyone has a question about that, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Hurley, who's going to talk about some fireworks safety issues. Yes, Councilmember?
Yes, I do. In your presentation, you said that, am I understanding that whether it's safe and sane or illegal, that it cannot be discharged on the street?
Correct.
So I often see people setting up the safe and sane fireworks on the public street, not in their driveway. So they can't do that. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. What about altered? I think Mason said last year, if it leaves the ground, it's illegal.
If it is...
Go ahead.
Chief?
Yeah. Bottom line is, if it does not have that seal, it's not going to be a projectile, a rocket type of device. And at that point, it needs to be mounted to the ground and stay on the ground and do the fountains and the whistles and do that type of thing. What we have also seen is people modifying the safe and sane fireworks, which is, once you modify them, they're no longer safe and sane. So that's something we've seen, and that is something we've had fires caused by that and property damage caused by people doing that thing. And that, to me, and to enforcing that, to me, has become an illegal firework. Before I move forward, with the booths opening up, the firework booths that we have, we did a safety meeting last week with all the different groups that we have that are going to have firework stands this year. They will be allowed to open on the 28th at noon, on the 20th, no sooner than noon, and they need to close at 8:00 on each day after that, and then also on the 4th. The stands are to be taken down and removed by the 5th. That was informed to all the booths, and that we are strict about that, that they need to be closed down at 8:00 because after 8:00, when things start getting crazy, we're not going to have time to go out and make sure that all the stuff's out of the booths and is safe. It's our intention to make sure that those booths are just as safe as anywhere else. But so moving forward with the, just the safety concerns that we have, our intent isn't to cite people for that. Our intent is to have an ordinance that will give people the understanding that if they're going to choose to use fireworks, they need to be responsible because their actions can damage their property, neighbor's property, or hurt somebody, either minor or even tragically. So with that, being responsible, I'll go real quick with this checklist of safety. The use of alcohol or being under the influence of alcohol is definitely discouraged, and it is marked on the fireworks that that is not to be a practice. Never let children handle or play with or light fireworks. I tell you, my son, he does not like it when I'm home during the Fourth of July. He wants to, and we have to be responsible to make sure that our children are being safe. Never aim or point or throw fireworks at another person. That, again, falls into being responsible and taking responsibility for your actions. Do not light fireworks in an area where there is dry grass or brush that could catch fire, and that goes to another point. If you have dry grass in your backyards, your neighbor has dry grass in their backyard, or you're next to a piece of property that may have dry grass, by all means, contact myself, contact our department. We will make contact with your neighbor. We will try to remedy that situation before the 4th. We have been extremely busy with the Wee DeBaiman program, and it's just, it's an ongoing issue because especially the amount of rain that we had this year. Always be cautious when lighting fireworks during windy conditions. Hopefully, this year, we have a calm night that we don't have a lot of wind. Prevaling winds can blow the embers blocks away from where you actually lit it off, especially the illegal ones that are shooting up in the air. Do not light fireworks near or in the general area of flammable liquids. Seems self-explanatory, but it definitely needs to be brought to people's attention. Always keep your head and your body away from the item as you're lighting it. And that includes a safe and sane. If you're lighting a fountain, not to be putting your head or your hands in front of, or in front of or over that device that it's going to be activating. Always light fireworks with an extended device. Once the fuse is lit, get away quickly. And if you're purchasing the fireworks at the booths, they sell what are called bunts that you can use to light the fuse, and they have those available for you. Light only one firework at a time. Again, that goes to modifying it. There are times where people are tying them together, causing them to be a bigger device than they were intended to be. Never attempt to relight after or fix a dud. If it didn't work, let it go, put it in a bucket of water, and be done with it. Let it sit for five minutes, and then go ahead and put it in a bucket of water for 10, and then you should be able to dispose of it. Have a working fire extinguisher, garden hose, a bucket of water nearby for emergencies. Immersa used fireworks in a bucket for at least 10 minutes, as like I mentioned before. This is something to always remember. The noise and the lights from the fireworks is often frightening to animals. We need to remember that, and again, being responsible as adults and members of our community to be cautious of your own pets and your neighbor's pets. Never use fireworks indoors. That one always kind of gets a question. Why would somebody use that, do that indoors? But it needs to be reminded. Always store fireworks in a cool, dry place, well away and out of the reach of children. So that wraps up just our basic rules. And if you, if anyone is purchasing fireworks at the stands, the stands are provided a list of safety, safety information, both in English and Spanish, that we provide to them. We make sure that that is given with every purchase. By all means, read that. If they have questions, feel free to give my office a call. Our intent is to get through the Fourth of July, celebrate the holiday, but to be safe and not cause any damage or get anybody hurt. Thank you.
What kind of precautions do we take for pets? I mean, how do we have them call the police department? What do we do? Because every year, you know, I get people telling me how frightened their pets are, and then maybe sometimes we have one that gets lost or whatever.
I would imagine definitely we'd contact the police department to see if there are any missing, or dogs are found. Do you get a lot of animals that come into the center?
Thank you, Chief. We generally do see a slight increase during the Fourth of July holiday in regards to animals getting out. They get confused. I had a canine back when in my younger days, and I believe it was actually the Fourth of July holiday. He got out of his pen inside my backyard, jumped my backyard fence. He was just a dope dog. And one of my buddies caught him down the street, but it's a little embarrassing. But that does happen. That does happen often. We plan on having animal control staff available that night, so to help address that influx of animals that we may see.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Any other questions for us? I have one more comment before we walk away.
Counsel, anything? Okay, go ahead.
So the last comment that we have is that we will start probably tomorrow our social media campaign on educating and getting, making the public aware of the rules that we just kind of went about, went over tonight. We'll be part of, both of our departments will be part of an OES press conference that'll be held on July 2nd in Atwater, where they'll be talking about fire safety and the Safe and Sane Fourth of July Fireworks Show. So we'll be all part of that. Our goal is to have extra bodies out enforcing our fireworks rules come the Fourth of July. I won't tell you how many. It just so happens to fall on a really good day for us as far as our schedule goes, our monthly schedule, and the days that our patrol officers work. So that's going to be a good thing. We plan on having code enforcement and other staffing out available to address the issue as well. So we'll be out there. Any other questions?
Questions, Counsel?
Great. I appreciate it, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item 10, future dog park presentation. Public Works Director, City Fatchen? Oh, okay. Come on up, Joe.
Thank you.
Your presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll get it. All right. So just to introduce myself real quick. My name's Joe Heim. I'm the Parks and Rec Manager within Public Works here. And we are talking here today about a dog park. Thank you for letting me talk about what we're trying to accomplish in the next fiscal year, and thank you for approving funds for it. So what we're here talking about is a dog park in Los Banas. That would be the first of its kind in Los Banas. The creation, like I said, is the first in town. We are targeting this next fiscal year for the dog park, both to design, plan, but also to construct and open. That's our goals. From a funding standpoint, this is coming from the Parks Development Fund, and we have allocated $125,000 for design and construction of the dog park. So just a little background of the value of dog parks. They not only add an off-leash area for dogs to exercise and socialize, but they're also a fantastic resource for humans. It's a great way to make a connection with a neighbor. And it's also something that I can really attest to as something that really the public has asked for, especially since I've been here. I can say that it's one of the most requested park items that comes up. We've had a few areas where we've reached out for public comment. Recreation was out at the pet fair. We got some comments from there. On Facebook, we had over 72% of respondents on Facebook polled that they were likely or highly likely to use a dog park. In reaching out for other projects, high school students had expressed interest in a dog park at overwhelming rates. In addition, I'm aware of some local petitions that have also geared some interest towards dog parks. So it's definitely something that really the community has wanted for a long time, long before me, and since in my time here, that it's something that has been talked about quite a bit by the public. So I'm very excited about it. I think the public's very excited about it, and talking with members of council and city staff, we're also very excited. Location-wise, staff has identified Ag Sports Complex as the primary potential location. The area is, and I will show a map of the site, the area is maintained by the Parks Division and is located on the east side of the softball fields. There is a perimeter fence in place, and the area in total is one acre in size. And the one thing that really stands out to me as far as why this location is optimal is because it does have regional and residential access. One thing that we're really trying to consider is possible neighborhood disturbances from putting a dog park in into a constructed park, and then also allowing... But you still want to have people be able to get to that park. Same thing for people coming through the community as well to be able to benefit. So our strategy in terms of the dog park at this point is, you know, we have identified several elements that we really feel are required elements. So six-foot at least fencing, a double-gated entrance, informational signage, cleanup bag stations, covered trash cans, ADA access, and a water source for humans and dogs. Otherwise, there are some other things that we will need to consider, and they include shade, trees, restroom access, lighting, separate dog areas, mixed dog areas, small dog areas, those types of separations, play amenities, surfacing, irrigation paths. All of those things need to be considered with this project. So this is a map of the Ag Sports Complex, the zoomed-in image. You can see the red line is the area that there is currently perimeter fencing, which is the area we'd like to, or we recommended as an identified location for this dog park. You can kind of see in this whole general area, there's not a lot of parks on that side of town. So this really, this park serves a regional purpose, but it also really serves a residential purpose as well. You can also notice that there is no housing on the neighboring sides of this dog park area, this potential area. So, and there's also a large parking lot here, so being able to service hopefully a lot of people visiting this park. And our next step with this is community meeting. We hope to host those in August. We will be soliciting public input on this. Some of the elements that I talked about a couple of slides back, we really want to discuss location, amenities, how we want to design it in terms of small dogs, mixed areas, things like that, different weather conditions that might come up, potential noise level, dog waste, maintenance issues, those types of things that hopefully we are able to have a dialogue with the public on. Additionally, we have dog park ordinances in place, so following up with those. And I know a couple of them are maintaining a current dog license, as dogs must be in a healthy condition, and of course, following park operation hours. So those areas of topics will be discussed at that public meeting. And that is all I have for this presentation. I am located out at the community center, and I'm happy to talk with anybody from the public or anybody from the council with this project. I'm very excited about it. I know a lot of people in the community are as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really happy about this dog park coming forward. It's been a long time coming, and I know the community, as you've indicated, is going to be happy about this. I don't recall all of, I know that I was helped with some of the movement of the new codes for our animal control, and I don't quite remember all that was in there in regards to the dog park and what the requirements would be. But, and I'll But, um, and, and I'll have to look back at it. But one of the things that, uh, if it's not in there, I'd like the council to consider, uh, making amendment to is, uh, outside of the dogs needing to be licensed and to be in good health and to have the minimum shots that the city requires them to have, is also that it's, it's a good idea that dogs that are going to use this park should be spayed and neutered to, uh, be able to go in. If you don't, you can have two dogs who, uh, male dogs who have not been neutered, uh, become very dominant. Uh, if you have a female dog that's in there that's, uh, in heat and, and hasn't been, uh, spayed, it could cause big problems. So, to me, that would be one of the requirements that we should have within our code for people to use the park is that their animals have to be spayed and neutered.
I think all ordinance updates would, would be something that we'd want to discuss at the public meetings and then being able to bring that back here, uh, would be, I think, the, the path. Thank you.
Any other council member, any other questions? Comments? Well, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you to all Public Works and, and, uh, and now we have the money to do this. And so, uh, we're looking just for, for updates when you're ready to give them to us. And, and then send us an announcement when you have the public meetings so we can, uh, if we're available, we can, we'd like to come too. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, let's go on to item 11. Consideration of Approval to Solicite Applications For the Measure V Citizens Oversight Committee And Appointment of the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem To Sit on the Committee to Interview And Recommend Appointment to the City Council At the July 17th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Uh, Alex?
Guess this is me. So, uh, we do have a vacancy, uh, on the Measure V Citizens Oversight Committee of the city's appointee to that committee, uh, as a result of a recent resignation, uh, of that committee member. Uh, so we're seeking authorization from the council tonight, uh, to move forward with the process to, uh, designate and appoint a new rep to that committee. This really concludes my staff report.
All right, any questions, Mrs. Lewis?
I'm looking at the current committee that, uh, the Citizens Oversight Committee here and I see a vacancy in Gustine. So, are you saying that we have a vacancy in Los Banos?
Yes.
Wait a minute, go ahead.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So, this would be for the city's vacancy or the city's representative to the Measure V Oversight Committee.
Okay.
There, there happen to be other vacancies in other designated slots, but, uh, this particular item is related to the city's, city's appointee.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion then? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. So, I just have to, sorry, I just want to make sure. I have to make a motion for just you and I to be appointees, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And, to, to, yeah, to advertise.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I'm in a different area. Okay.
You can say is authorized as read by title.
Cool, thank you. Um, I would like to authorize, um, excuse me. I would like to authorize the appointment of the, I'm sorry, um, myself, uh, Pro Tem and the mayor as authorized by title.
Okay, and, uh, and solicit applications.
Add two solicit applications, thank you.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Santos, second by Jones for the approval to solicit applications and for the mayor and the mayor pro tem to sit in on the interviews and bring back a recommendation July 17th meeting. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Advisory and public notices, one report. Director Adams?
Yes. Um, so we have a site plan review. This is for rain flow developments. They're proposing to develop a car wash. Uh, this would be two structures that would total four thousand six hundred and sixty-two square feet. Uh, this public hearing will be held on Wednesday, June 26th, 2019 here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM.
Is that many dirty cars in Los Banos?
Yes, so, um, this, yes. Um, we do live in an agricultural community, but, um, we do have a similar, uh, this would be similar to Prime Shine and Fast Track. And this will be on the west end of town at fourteen fifteen Badger Flat Road, uh, which is near Denny's.
Okay, all right. Uh, any questions about the report? Okay, let's go on to item 13. Alex?
I'm not sure I have much of a report this evening, but just did want to thank the staff and the council for support and adoption of the budget. I think I mentioned it in the workshop, that, that, the budget document as well as the CIP represent, it's probably safe to say hundreds of hours worth of staff time at the department level, at the finance level and the council level in preparing those documents. So, uh, appreciate the support. Um, we've got a lot of work to do, so thanks, counsel.
Okay. Next report is Report Update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG and Measure V Committee. I'm going to make this really short tonight. And, uh, like we discussed last week, uh, we have the money for the, the walking path to Merced College, which is fantastic. The money is there due to Measure, uh, Measure V funds. And the Pioneer Road's going to be expanded to four lane, but we have to go through planning, design and right-of-way purchase. So, we have the money to take us through right-of-way purchase. And then that's when, uh, it becomes shovel-ready, so to speak, uh, that term to choose. And that's when Caltrans looks at us so they can do the actual construction of the road. Um, I can talk a little bit more about that later and, uh, but also at MCAG meeting tomorrow, yeah, it's something that, that it's, it's not immediate, but if we just don't, don't start dealing with this now, uh, Los Banos may end up at some point years and years down the road without a dump site at Billy Wright Road. And because now the, uh, the county is taking, not the county, MCAG is taking in additional garbage from other municipalities, uh, and, and waste. So, it's eating up the, uh, the airspace out there. So, uh, at some point, they either have to make a decision to expand or stop taking in that revenue. And everything has an equal and opposite, uh, reaction. So, if they stop taking in revenue, they stop making money. And if they stop making money, then you could possibly say that the, uh, the tipping rates have to go up. So, by taking in this additional, uh, uh, garbage, the tipping rates stay down. But in doing so, it's eating up the airspace of the, uh, of the dump. So, um, they've been looking into purchasing additional land. And purchasing additional land, they haven't moved on it because they didn't think it was a priority, but now it's become a priority because we have to start planning for years and years and years by the time all the, the federal and state agencies get into this and they've identified some land. And so, we have to talk about whether they're going to purchase that or not. Because I'd hate to see our garbage trucked another fifty miles as a transfer station in Los Banos and then brought to Highway 59 and the other side of Merced. That would cost us a fortune. Plus, all the, the driving miles to drive garbage from one side of the county to the other. It's not a great idea. So, we're starting to plan for this now and it's going to take, uh, time, but we've got to make a commitment to start purchasing this land if we're going to purchase it and expanding the dump or we're not going to take in any additional garbage. But that's still, there's a limit to the time that the, uh, uh, the dump space will be open. And we've got to consider Los Banos because that's the only dump site on the west side. And, uh, and I don't think our residents, years down the road with way recycling's going in garbage, the cost of it, that they're going to be able to afford. And we don't want to set the stage for them for future costs that are going to be very expensive. Uh, also, uh, the, uh, the person who has, um, uh, who does the recycling for the county, they have asked for an increase, the, the, the company has asked for an increase. And so, um, uh, so there are only two, basically two, um, cities that are doing recycling. That's the city of Merced and the city of Los Banos. And so, I asked, the only two people would have their rates go up then would be the city of Los Banos and the city of, uh, of Merced because the, uh, the recycling facility wants an increase. Well, they hired a consultant and the consultant came up with the, uh, the recommendation not to do the increase and just wait out the contract and, and, uh, see if that's possible with, with the hauler itself or the recycler. Because that, we just went through a Prop 218. And, and as Sonia said, that cost fifteen thousand dollars to send out those letters. Now, there's a possibility that if MCAG says, no, we want to increase the rates for recycling, the city of Merced could be on the hook for three hundred thousand dollars and us for almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional, which we have to pass on to the ratepayers, which I don't think is fair. And so, uh, I'll be giving you more information on that. I have a meeting with MCAG tomorrow. But, but the consultant that we hired to, to, uh, to, to make a recommendation said no rate increase at this time. So, that's good. And then they can renegotiate the contract and see who else is going to come on to, uh, to do recycling in the county. Cause right now, there are only two cities doing recycling. It's the city of Los Banos and the city of Merced. Mrs. Lewis, I can't go into discussion about this, but I can, until, until he pu- punches me here.
So, I can ask a question about recycling?
You don't want to do that? Okay, so, so we do that, but I, I would suggest that you, you can ask a question. Would you ask it of Alex tomorrow? And so, any questions that you have, uh, I, I would, I would sort of keep me out of problems. I would, all the information that I gave you tonight, Alex has the same information. He's very knowledgeable, more than I on this, and, and he can give you all the answers that you, you want. Okay, so with that, I'm going to go on to the next subject. And this is not a discussion item because all it is, because I'm going to say things that come up, but I can discuss them under MCAG and Measure V. But I can't, I, I can list response, responses. So, please go to Alex if you have any questions or that you need answered. All right, so let's go on to item 15, City Council Member Reports. And, uh, let's start with Mr. Freya. You're not here, Mr. Freya. Okay, so let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much. So, um, I was finally able to get myself together and get my community meeting, that's a date set with the help of Stacy and Alex. Um, so July 11th at six o'clock will be my community meeting. Um, I'm still going around as well to everyone to see if you can make it. But, um, yeah, please come on out. Uh, it's District One. Um, there, I want to thank Rhonda Lowe as well for this because she put out a little map just in case anyone's confused about what District One was. Um, so, yeah, July 11th at 6:00 PM, there will be a community meeting in District One. It's at the, thank you, it's at the Ranchwood Park, um, on Stonewood Five, uh, 515 Stonewood Drive.
Okay.
Stonewood Street.
Very good.
Yes, thank you, and that's all I have.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to Mr. Jones.
No report.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I, I want to thank our Public Works staff yesterday evening for putting on a, a public, uh, meeting regarding the quote-unquote "state street improvement project" uh, in Los Banos in District Four. Uh, it's been a long time coming. Uh, the streets of Colorado, Vermont, uh, Pennsylvania and Maryland will finally be getting sidewalks after all the years those houses have been there. And I, I think the community members are excited about that coming in. Uh, certainly, they had questions, uh, and the staff was gracious enough to, uh, soothe some of their concerns and they're going to be working with them, uh, before this project moves forward to answer all their questions. So, again, I want to thank our Public Works staff. I want to thank, uh, just the money that came from Measure V to help this, uh, come to fruition and any other monies that came out of our city budget to make sure that the residents in this area have streets. And also, um, handicap access as well. Um, and last Friday, I, this past Friday, I believe it was, we had the, um, rededication of our Cardoza Park. Um, and, uh, we have two wonderful soccer fields there and it was a great event. A, a lot of our youth soccer groups came out that day and we had representatives from the Sharks that, uh, came and, uh, helped us with our celebration. So, thank you again to our staff and our city and to Public Works for making sure this project went forward. Uh, and lastly, um, I noticed, um, coming home one day, uh, on the landscape median between Walmart and Dr. Boz, I think Allergy Center and Denny's, that there had been revitalization of the landscape, uh, on the, um, Island Median there. So, our landscape lighting district money is working and, um, I'm assuming that was done by Ronnie's staff and, uh, it's a beautiful job, uh, well done. And I'm looking forward to seeing other opportunities within our city where our landscape is going to be enhanced. Uh, I understand there was some, uh, project landscape done on the Seventh Street Medians. Uh, I haven't been over there yet, but I do intend to go over and see what it looks like. So, again, thank you to our Public Works staff, uh, to seeing that through and to the, uh, the monies that, uh, came in through the landscape and lighting district to have that completed. And that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You know, every so often on social media, I, I hear these comments, you have to stop building houses. Why doesn't the city council stop building the houses? Why don't we, uh, just, just put a moratorium on housing? You cannot put a moratorium on housing unless you have lack of water, lack of sewer facilities or there's some, some reason not to build, some health and safety reason not to build more houses. Well, we're not at that point. We have the necessary water, we have the sewer capacity. And the houses that were approved, the lots that were approved, there's probably close to fifteen hundred to two thousand lots that are still buildable lots in this community. You can't deanics the land. You can't go back and say, okay, we're going to take that land back and it's going to go back to farmland. It's not going to happen. So, uh, you know, it's social media, I, 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 I understand your comments. Sometimes I understand your frustration, but this is what we have. And as I said tonight about, in talking about the, um, uh, about housing for individuals, people are coming here because we have housing that's a lot less than the Bay Area. And they come here for family atmosphere and they come here for hopefully a better life for their family. But rooftops do not pay the way. And we have two communities. We have the Monday through Friday community and we have the Saturday and Sunday community. So, understand some of the frustrations that we have. Rooptops do not pay the way of the city. And everyone says, why don't you bring more jobs here? Why doesn't the city council bring more jobs? Why doesn't the city bring more jobs? These big companies are entrenched in the Bay Area. Unless they are electronically commuting, all their facilities are there. And what's going to prompt them to come to this community, Merced, Atwater, Dos Palos, Castine? What's going to prompt them to come here when they have a built-in workforce that drives over the hill every day? And they're willing to do so to make a living? It's not socially conscious by the, the big companies. That's why we're going to need help from the state legislature and we're going to need help from our governor to say, why are people commuting all these miles each day? Four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two people leave our city and they're driving anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty miles one way and then a hundred to a hundred and fifty miles home. And you can imagine the wear and tear, the, the pollution, the gas prices that are going up again and people are eking out a living. Now, some of these things that you want, the amenities that you want, we're going to try and provide for you. For the first time in a long while, it, it is such a great outlook for our budget. And thank you, city staff, for what you've done in putting that together. I can't thank you enough because, you, you know, I remember when we didn't have anything. Now, we've got something. And we've got something due to the good graces and good fiscal management of our city and the, the, the good graces of our community that are helping to pay for these things. Understand, everybody in this city council would love to bring more jobs here. But they are entrenched in the Bay Area. And only when someone who is socially conscious to say, I don't want my employees driving that far and I'm going to have them work where they live. they live, will we have more people who are remaining in our community during the day? So we cherish your thoughts. We'll listen to them. That's why I'm responding to this tonight. Talk to your city council members. You come up with a different idea. We want to listen to you. We're not shutting anyone out, and neither will our staff. So, but this is the way it is. And we have, again, 1,500 to 2,000 lots that were approved before anyone on this council ever, ever started serving the city. So that land cannot be taken away. So if you think that, and you post that on social media and said, why can't you just deannex the land? Forget it. It's not going to happen. So with that, we have public employee annual performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, title city manager. It's a closed session item. If we have anything to report, we will do so afterwards. Thank you, and have a nice evening.